Andrew, that spot's for you if you want a place to take notes. Sorry. All right. All right, you got me? We're good? Okay. Good evening. I'm gonna call the regular board meeting of the Waterloo Community Schools Board of Education to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now Astor Williams will read our mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing their career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you, Astor. We do have a few changes to the agenda tonight. I just wanna let our public know that we will be moving items P, Q, and R up ahead of the consent agenda, just so everyone is, will be on the literal same page. So with that, then, the first item on our agenda this evening is item A, and this is the public hearing regarding the Sloan Wallace Stadium demolition. So if there are people here this evening that wish to talk about something other than that, that's totally fine. You'll have your opportunity just in a little bit. But at this point, I will declare the public hearing open, and anyone who wishes to address the board may come forward. Please state your name and address, and the public hearing is open. And again, this is about the Sloan Wallace demolition project. Come on up, don't be shy.
Good afternoon. I'm Fred Mehe. I reside in Cedar Falls, although I live and work in, or I work in Waterloo. I'm a proud Waterloo Public School graduate. I appreciate all the work, the hard work you're doing. I appreciate the, the great work that the school system is doing, and Dr. Lindman, I always appreciate everything you're doing, your vision, and, and anyway, thank you for allowing me to speak here today. I wanna talk about the speak-up on the Sloan Wallace demolition project. It kinda caught me off-guard. Somebody mentioned, well, they're gonna tear down Sloan Wallace. I said, "They can't tear down Sloan Wallace." Well, it was made clear in the Courier this weekend, that's the intention, and I, I don't disagree that maybe that's gonna be the path of progress. And I wanna speak from my heart, my emotion here today, because Sloan Wallace, I think, represents a lot of things. Now, in fairness, for those that don't know me, I sell real estate here in Cedar Falls in Waterloo, and often I'm in front of the planning and zoning, and the city looking to tear a building down, or, or allow this, this project to go forward. And I don't wanna sound hypocritical, I'm gonna be in front of the city here before too long, 'cause I'm working on the project with Scholz Hospital. That's another big item that people have some strong feelings about. But at any rate, I can stand firmly here today and have, speak my conscience and feel like I'm, I'm being honest and fair and consistent with my beliefs. You know, this hearing, I trust, is to fill in any things you don't know about Sloan Wallace in order to agree to this consent item to follow Dr. Lindman's proposal to issue bids. And I'd like to start and ask you to pause. Consider putting this off, remove this from the, from the line item today, and just take a step back. And the reason I, I say that and I do that, well, in reading that article yesterday morning, I'm just flooded with memories. I grew up, I'm a Whittier boy, West Junior, West High School. My dad was an East High graduate, 1945. My grandmother, I think she graduated from East High in 1912. But my memories go back to watching East and West play. And I kinda put this in the, in the context of the old East-West games. I see Coach Kittleson here, and, and he was there, front and center. But I remember Ober Tisdale, he was a great ballplayer. Of course, he was for East High, but he was a great ballplayer, went on to play at Iowa State, I believe, and, and has had a real successful life as a result of his schooling here and his life at Iowa State. I remember Tom Smith, you know, and his younger brother Jeff, that played with Charlie Aldrich on the East High group, that graduated in 1971. I remember the Moses family, I remember, you know, Jerry and Neil, and then Ricky and Tim. Tim's here today, another great illustration of, of what that stadium represents. And I remember the West High boys, I remember Dick Kimble, I remember David Beck, I remember Tom Pennaluna. I remember my, my contemporaries, Mike Knox and Forrie Smith and, and Reese Wilson, Larry Martin. We had some great games there, and they were, they were incredible efforts, a great East High team versus a great West High team. I was fortunate, I played in that game in 1970, and I, you know how memories expand, and I swear there are 20,000 people there. The Courier said 9,000, so maybe I'm off. But it was, I think it was the first televised high school football game. East High was ranked number one, they had an unblemished record, I can't recall 50 or 60 games in a row having been beaten, and we were gonna beat them that year. We were undefeated, and whoa, we came up short, and the better team won that year. If we could've played three more games, we might've won one, and then we'd go to the last game and see who really was the best, but that's how I remember it. But the field was set, and it was a battlefield. And we, you know, it was, Waterloo was such a beautiful place, and that, you know, we, we had a lot of diversity on that field. And we played hard, we played hard to win, and we played fair, and we played honest in our games, and the referees always called the games good. But at the end of the game, the game was over with, and we always shook hands. And after those games, my compatriots at East High, my competitors, have been lifelong friends. You know, Tim has been a lifelong friend, his family. And, and what I'd like to really focus on in that stadium is, is all the good that that represents for the city of Waterloo. You know, there's plenty of reasons people wanna send their kids someplace else, you know, everybody's got a reason to, you know, find out some reason why we can do something better someplace else. But I wanna tell you, that stadium really represents the best of Waterloo, Iowa. And I think about, I think about the people after they graduated, they've gone on to work together, whether it was Wrath Packing Company, or John Deere, they go off to college together. I remember Forrie Smith went off to Iowa State with, with Jerry Moses, and now they're on the same team. But, or whether you go off to work, to work together, you know, we demonstrated that after the game's over with, we're all in this together, and, and I couldn't be more pro Waterloo and what we're doing here. I ask you to put a pause on this, to think about what could be done with that. And I know it's important to convert the space for this, for the kids there, and I, and I understand that, and I get this, and I'm, I'm totally fine with that. But I'd like to take a pause here, and take a year, and study it, and maybe there's a way to tell a story. You know, we need another museum, but really, we could use another museum. I could see, I could see the score of every East-West game on that stadium wall somewhere. I could see the, the people that scored touchdowns are the captains of the, the teams in East or West. There's a story to be told there. There are past council members, mayors, school board members. There are, there are many stories from that football field that demonstrate who Waterloo is and what we are. It isn't all just Dan Gable, we got a lot of stories. And I'd love to take, I'd love to put a pause on this and say, "Let's study about this. Maybe there, maybe we're moving a little bit too quick. One more year after seven, I don't think it's too much to ask."
And Mr. Mehe, if you don't mind, in essence, to let everybody have time to talk tonight, I'm just gonna ask you to just kinda conclude your comments when you're...
You know what? You hit me, it's just break time. And, you know, I appreciate your time, I really do, and I think it's important, and I hope there's somebody else here or something else to say, but thank you again.
Appreciate your comments, thank you. The mic is open. I asked somebody to stop their comments, and then, and then we don't have any, so...
Zach Zimmerman, Principal Irving Elementary. And I'd like to say the acumen, or the sentiment that he was talking about, about the history. There is history there. I, when I was in 17th grade at Central, we played there. There's great history to it. But when we look at the facility and look at the community within the neighborhood, something loses change. And there is not a lot of resources for our students and our...
Zach, can you...
Sorry. There's, there's not a lot of resources within that community around Irving. And, and I, I do think that if we were to move forward and build a big playground, look into, you know, community gardens, look into a baseball diamond, Little League diamond, something to get the community involved within Irving, within that community, where it is a safe place, because there is not a lot of resources around that community. And so, a lot of our staff is here tonight. We hope you guys consider, because we would love to use that space as not just for Irving, but for the community that surrounds Irving. And I think that's the biggest thing that I see a need for within our community, is a large recreation field area where the community can come together, like we said previously, within the football, within all the other sports that, that took place there. So, thank you.
Roger Kittleson, 1620 Longfellow in Waterloo. I wasn't gonna speak here tonight. I came here because of Tim, but in listening to Fred, I think I have a lot of memories here, too. But I can also see the progress in that area, would probably need some help, and maybe Fred wants to sell some land there, whatever. I'm all for that. The only thing I would request, that maybe there is some way to preserve those memories that he talked about. And maybe it's not there, maybe it's in the school board, or the scoreboard. I don't want it in my backyard, by the way, but where it is, is fine, and I think you already proposed that. But anything along those lines, I think, would at least, to me, be meaningful. And if you could do something like that, that would be fine. Thank you for your time, and it's open.
You can come up here and take my job. He was timing himself. All right, is there anyone else? I wanna make sure that people do have an opportunity to be heard if they wish this evening.
How you doing? Charles Pearson. I was asked to come, I didn't even know this was happening, but somebody asked me to come here. But I think there's a couple things that could happen. One, I think Sloan Wallace being on the National Register of Historic Places, I think it's significant when it comes to sports and using that as an educational weapon, I think that's something you can consider. I think there's federal funds out there that's available to do some restoration or revitalization of the facility. I think also, when it comes to an educational piece, there's an opportunity when it comes to the civil rights movement in Waterloo, Iowa. I think Sloan Wallace was like a pillar to a lot of the activity happening on the East Side and West Side of Waterloo. I think when it comes to sports on a national platform, I think Sloan Wallace did his job when it comes to West Waterloo athletes and East Waterloo athletes. I think people all around the United States of America knows about Sloan Wallace. I think if we set it up the right way, especially when it comes to educating our own community and the public about the significance of the location, I think also, when it comes to the city of Waterloo, the city could help the school board champion the project, because we have a historical preservation commission, they have a certified local government program that could jump right in, so when it comes to a city partnership, I think the Waterloo Community Schools could partner with the city on that end. I think, um, when it comes to the African-American community, you have a lot of legacy in Black Waterloo that's also associated with Sloan Wallace Stadium. So when you talk about the 24/7 Wall Street Report, you could actually use that, this type of project as a model on the direction Waterloo Community Schools is going, compared to just having the report have no results. And I think when it comes to the younger generation of Waterloo, Iowa, they deserve an opportunity to experience Sloan Wallace, not just as a recreational facility, but like I said, when it comes to the legacy of Waterloo's sports, that stadium could do a lot for our youth, 'cause I think it's a big disconnect between American history, local history, and a lot of our Waterloo youth, so. A lot of you already know me, those are my suggestions. Thank you.
Anyone else on the Sloan Wallace project? All right, seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed, and we will address this issue... Oh, we do have to vote? Okay. This is roll call? Okay. Yep, I need a motion to close. Thank you, Sue. And a second, Jesse. And all those in favor, India?
Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Astor?
Yes.
Lael?
Yes.
Sheriff, I, we have closed the public hearing. Thank you. Then the next item on our agenda this evening is information from individuals and delegations. And so I would ask anyone who wishes to address the board on any topic other than the Sloan Wallace demolition, to come forward for this part of our meeting this evening. You will have three minutes. I would ask that you, again, state your name and address, and that you keep your comments positive, that you choose not to comment on people's work performance, et cetera. And we generally don't address items that are not also on our agenda this evening, but we will welcome you to the mic to hear what you might have to say, 'cause we've got a nice full audience tonight, and I bet there's lots to be told. So with that, I would open up the mic for open comments. Tim's gonna go. Somebody's gonna go. No? Okay, you're just here. Okay. All right? Okay.
Hi, I'm Melissa Lastly, 729 Hammond Avenue, Waterloo. And that wasn't a question. I just was trying to just say that. Anyway, I'm here about the Kitterell Lowell.
Boundary change, yes. Please vote on it, say yes. Lowell needs to be bigger, Kitterell needs to be smaller.
I was involved in the meetings when we kind of talked about changes in boundaries, and I think that we came up with a really good option, which was three modified on our end. I don't know, it's probably just number one for you guys. But I, you know, I would love to get this done now, so that in 2022, when Lowell is up and running and everybody's there, that we can start moving more families in and just having the health of both schools, strong and healthy, so that, so that the families and the communities can, can really grow and build that, those relationships. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being brave. All right, is there anyone else then for public comment tonight? All right, then seeing none, we will move on. The first item on our, the second item on our agenda then, is the proposed elementary boundary changes for the 2022-2023 school year. This is item B in your exhibit, or if you're following along. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education adopts the elementary boundary changes as proposed on the attached map to take effect beginning with the 2022-2023 school year. So move. Thank you, Sue, and a second, India? Great, and both of them, just FYI, were on the committee for this. So now that we have the motion on the table, I'll bring forward some people to talk a little bit more about it, and hopefully we can get this map blown up for anybody who needs it. So, Andrew, do you have a copy? Okay. Great.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
This is like old homewik for me. I'm looking out here, and I see lots of people from East High School, like the whole history of East High and the current part of East High. And, and Dr. Pat, as he's showing, he's like, "What about me?" I, I would also like to thank our parent that came up and spoke. We, we spent three meetings going through a number of options. We started with two at the first meeting, and then we came back to the second meeting, and when we left the second, second meeting, we were at six. And we narrowed those down, and at the third meeting, we actually had better maps, thanks to Pam and Matt, and it was much easier to see everything. And we came to a decision that the best thing for the families in the area that would be affected would be the changes that we're making, that are proposed in this particular agenda. And we did do a survey of parents to also find out, we invited more people to come to the meetings, and we, we did our very best to inform. And just so the whole board is aware, in order to make this less painful, because it's hard, boundary things are hard, we made sure that if your child is in Kitterell, you get to finish at Kitterell. And if you have a child in Kitterell and one coming up, that child can stay with their sibling at Kitterell and then finish up. We did a very good job of trying to make this not painful for the families in, in our movement to, to make this work, and like our, our parents said, to have a healthy school community for both places.
And Marla, I just wanna say I commend the committee on making that adjustment, because I do think that boundary changes can be very difficult for our families. People buy homes based on where children will go to school and all of that, so that ability, that flexibility, but also, one point I also wanna say is that families that reside in that area will also have the opportunity, if they choose to immediately, they may, they may go to Lowell, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
If they want to go immediately, they can.
So it really has lots of flexibility.
When it opens.
Yes. When it opens, yes. Yes, we got a little bit of time to wait there, so.
Yeah, and Ms. Page, can you kind of explain the back history as far as the crowdedness at Kitterell and the history of Lowell?
So what we have done here, and it came, it came to us as a group to talk about, was that Kitterell is on a part of town that their southern boundary continues to grow. It continues to grow. Lowell is pretty landlocked. They, they don't have area to grow. So Kitterell continued to get bigger and bigger and bigger. Lowell didn't have space to take anything on then, so Kitterell was all well over its capacity that it was built for. So when the opportunity arose, not that we wanted that opportunity, but when the opportunity arose to rebuild Lowell, there was space, and this was a way to alleviate that problem.
So the current Lowell is what, 380?
Dr. Lindman?
350.
And then the new Lowell will be 450?
450, yes.
So we definitely need to get some more students in.
Larger capacity.
I have a handout on this. As Melissa mentioned, we had options one to five, and then we had As, Bs, and...
Yes, we did, and modified.
Couple Cs on those as well. And it kinda came down to, I think, two final options, both of which were very similar. And so I'd just like to review the, the second option, finish the highest, and, and just kind of further explain, 'cause this is, this is, you know, we don't change boundaries very often, and, and we might wanna consider the second option here. I can accept either one, but let me just go through from the beginning, from the top here. Marla, do you get a couple?
I can come get it.
So this just outlines the... This just outlines the basic data up on top. Kitterell enrollment this year was 557, Lowell was 290, so that's 847 students. The new design capacity will be 450 for each one. Each one will have 21 main classrooms, so that's a students per classroom of 21.4, which is pretty consistent, I think, with what, what our normal operation is. So then, the, if you, if you, the number of students that would need to transfer out of Kitterell to get it back to design capacity of 450 is 107. The number of transfers that would be needed to go from Kitterell to Lowell, so that they would both be equal in size, design-wise they're equal, would be 134. Now, this proposal, in which Borland is the south boundary, transfers 172 students. So that results in the new Lowell being 462. That's the number we really didn't have at the, at the, I don't recall, at the meetings. And the new Kitterell would be 385. So it would clearly bring Kitterell down to below its capacity, but it really pushes the capacity alone. So let me go through the alternate, and it's like, as I said, I can accept either one. So alternate two would be the same as option one, as alternate one, only the south boundary would be Bor, would be Mitchell instead of Borland. So it's just one block up, but, and that's a 27-student difference. So now the new Lowell would be 435, the new Kitterell would be 412. Other considerations, and this is the one that I guess I'm concerned about the most, is the walking distance. The distance, the walking distance down Oregon Street between the two schools is .9 miles, 0.9 miles. So then, if we made as option one, which is proposed, Borland to the front door of Kitterell, of, yeah, Kitterell, is .2 miles, is six minutes the walking distance, according to MapQuest. Borland to Lowell, if you lived on the other side of the street, so to speak, or right along the side street, is .7 miles, so 15 minutes. So in that case, you get a person walking basically 15 minutes, when the closest school is six minutes. Okay? Then if you look at it from the other standpoint, from Mitchell to Kitterell is .3 miles. That would be eight minutes, and Mitchell to Lowell would be .6 miles, 13 minutes. Bottom line is, there's a two-minute difference, so, so you would, if you move the boundary, you would change the walking distance. So, so you would, if you move the boundary, you would change the walking distance. The minimal walking distance from six to eight minutes, you would move the maximum walking distance from 15 minutes down to 13 minutes. So instead of there being a nine-minute spread, there'd be a five-minute spread. So I don't know if that's enough to be of concern or not. If you look at the streets on the right-hand side, you can see in order from north to south there, Williston, Birch Forest, da-da-da-da-da. So Borland is pretty near, pretty near Kittrel, and, and quite a number of streets away. So the distance is kind of, I just want to make sure we, we understand that, where this boundary is. We did ask the city for the foreseeable expansion in each of those areas. We did not get a timely response, so we really don't have that information unless we receive something recently. And then the last consideration is overshooting, which means you move more students, and that's a proposal than what would be needed to equalize the students. Does have its advantage in that it would relieve Kittrel sooner. As Marla said, this is going to walk in over five or six years, so the first year really not going to have a full benefit. And whether you really get Kittrel down from 550 to a more respectable number, I don't know. So that would be one of the reasons to overshoot. But the two reasons to consider this other proposal is, number one, it does over, overcrowd Lowell. Six, 462 and a 450 school isn't really overcrowding, but it's above design capacity, let me put it that way. And then, and the other would be the walking distance. So like I say, that's, that's just kind of fully informed the, the board of option two, which was, was a pretty close, pretty close call, so.
Lyle, just a question on this data. Where are you taking Mitchell? Where are you saying is .3 miles Mitchell to Kittrel? Because if you go just on Oregon.
On Oregon.
Okay.
Right down Oregon.
Okay, because I'm looking at Baltimore and Mitchell?
Yeah.
That, that's, yeah.
There's a straight shot from Lowell to Kittrel right down Oregon.
Yeah.
So any, any side street would be an extra block or an extra two minutes, basically.
Right. And I think that when we had the meeting, if you recall, India and Lyle and I served with some parents, I think there's another parent back there too, and staff, but I think we kind of wanted to overshoot just because of the five to six year, was that not?
That's correct, Sue.
That's correct.
Yeah, the other part of that was because, because Lowell is landlocked, their capacity to grow is still not there, even with this change, whereas Kittrel's capacity to grow is, continues to be. Families moving into new, that's why we wanted the stuff from the city, but the families moving into new developments.
And I did hear from a planner at the city, just that development is more townhouses. So it may not be conducive to large families, but townhouses, the one south of Haiti, yeah. So that's what they had indicated there, so not knowing how many people we pulled from there. But I, I think that the reason we went to Baltimore, if we want to explain that a little bit, is we did not want to go farther than that, because that area had already been in
A previous boundary change, correct.
So we're trying to leave that more minimal, that's why it was more of a narrow scope. And we did talk about the Mitchell being a heavy-used street, that we would like that, but I thought that we kind of discussed pulling it to Borland would just be a little more relief on Kittrel and more to Lowell.
Yes, and not such a busy street to impact students as well.
And we also kind of discussed the whole bussy and how parents, yeah, parents transport their children, and it was kind of mentioned that a lot of them are picked up and dropped off versus walking, especially in that area, so.
At both schools.
At both schools. So that was something that we did consider too, that.
And I think that's an important point. I think the committee had talked about if parents are transporting for 15 minutes, they may transport for 13 minutes as well, and maybe even 11 minutes. So I think both principals served on the committee and were mentioning that they have a lot of parents dropping off and picking up, I believe was the comment.
That's absolutely correct.
Yeah, I'm just recalling. All right, so to be clear, the option that we are looking at, that is in this proposal, is option one on Lyle's spreadsheet. But Lyle, am I hearing that you would like to present option two as an amendment? Or are you, where are we? Because you can't.
No. I'm not going to propose it, but if someone else wanted to, I would support it.
Okay, thank you. I just was making sure I didn't.
Yeah, I just wanted everybody to have a little deeper understanding.
I just wanted to make sure that I understood.
What was going on.
That I hadn't missed you putting that on the, as a friendly amendment, so.
Another thing I think important to make sure the committee understands too, I know probably in some communications that this boundary change between the elementary schools does not impact middle schools in the zones. Because Kittrel is traditionally been, goes to Hoover, that doesn't change now with shifting there, so.
The middle school stays the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, throughout. I, I do, Lyle, I thank you for this, because that did give us the numbers that you had asked for too, and I appreciate that, but I just feel that even the numbers we're going with now, you know, we don't know how many kids are going to remain at Kittrel, so that still could overpopulate Kittrel. You know, let's say they're in third grade and they're just having a kindergarten, and those two may choose to stay there. They may choose to go to Lowell. So I just think that the more relief that we can provide, whether it's taken or not, I think is, is probably more to the advantage of us rather than less. That's my only, because Mitchell would be a clean boundary, but I think Borland was just, you know, we did that, and I think.
I just wanted to make it, make sure everybody understood that there's people that are within three blocks of a school that are going to end up walking six blocks to a different school. So we've always kind of wanted to put students in the closest school. We're kind of violating that rule right now, so we didn't want to come later and says, oh, we didn't know, we didn't know, you know, we're within the stone's throw of this school and we have to go to the other.
But on the far end, we have the same end to Irving, remember? I said that also, that we, yeah.
But nobody spoke to that tonight, so.
And just asking the question, if I was interested in going to Kittrel, even though Lowell is my district, do I have the opportunity to submit the request, a voluntary request?
That's my, yes, yes, you can, you can submit a voluntary transfer request and/or special permission in our district, two different things, but they're both available.
Okay.
Is that, is that for both schools?
Yes, for both schools. Right now, we do not have voluntarily transferred into Lowell because of its current location, but as we get it over here, that will open up.
But if there's full, if the building is full.
Right, we always look at class size. We, there's, you can't just get it just because you request it. There are certain things we put in place to determine whether we grant that or not.
Well, I just want to thank the parents that took their time to do this, and Ms. Pageant, and also the three board members, because you did meet three times and obviously poured through quite a bit of data to come up with this, so I really appreciate your time on all that. I think, you know, we don't take boundary changes lightly, so.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions then for Marla, for Lyle, or you ready? Okay, then all those in favor of approving the proposed elementary boundary changes for the 2022-2023 school year as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay right there, I think, so. Then the item C on our agenda is the board policy changes. This is our first reading, so we won't be voting on this this evening. This is policy 504.2 for the standardized dress code, and I will turn it right back over to you, Ms. Pageant.
Thank you very much. We have come to the conclusion in this district that we did need to look at dress code. Our dress code that first came out in 2009 served a wonderful purpose for our district. However, has, as time has gone on, it did come to us that we needed to look at some changes, and we did that. And what we came up with is that as a school, we absolutely need to take into account what our goals are in having a dress code. We need to take into account the uniqueness of our district that that dress code provides for us. We need to take into account the comfortability of our students and how they express themselves as individuals. And we need to take into account what, what is actually passable? What, what is actually passable that we, that will work for all of us? Works for the staff, it works for the students, it's enforceable, and, and it's good for our district. So in doing so, we did an awful lot of work, background work, to talk about what's important. I, I went out and I visited every single school, and I did an implementation study. I looked at, counted 50 kids in every school and, and just looked at how dress code was being followed. We put out some surveys, we talked to staff, we talked as district leaders. We, we asked parents, what is it that we really need? What would be, have the best fit for our kids, our staff, our administrators? And as you go through this, what you can see is, in an effort to work towards all of those things that I mentioned to start with, we came up with some ideas. Number one was the issue, and probably the thing that we saw the most, as you can probably guess, was around hoodies. That was the number one thing, probably followed by Crocs. And, and more and more people wear those professionally because of the healthcare field, so it was followed by that. And then it was followed by, do we have pride in our district? Do we let our kids express that pride and/or their individuality? So how we tried to address that was allowing, if it's a Waterloo Community Schools apparel, they're allowed to wear that. That shows pride in school, pride in community. And finally, for the other side of that expression, we added additional colors to the dress code, so that also adds for parents' shopability as well. So as you read through this, those were the things that we thought we could offer that would still allow us to have our uniqueness, kids have some opportunity to express themselves, it's enforceable for our administrators and our teachers, and, and it's passable, it's doable, it's what we can do and work with as a board and as a district.
So I see on here they removed leggings.
As the item B able to be worn, yes. Can be worn, yes.
So.
Yes, we put, yes, that's correct, because it has pockets, because that, that's almost like the hoodie issue, that's what fits, that's a fit-ability thing. It's not the same as leggings.
Correct.
We left, we left leggings as a restricted item.
So what's the difference?
Pockets.
Pockets, so they're the same tightness.
And the thickness, yes. So, so, and the thickness of the fabric, actually.
Or makeshift pockets.
Or makeshift pockets, right. But thickness of the fabric was really part of it?
And I will also say that due to the fact that we are limited as far as how we can purchase items in this area, a lot of areas, or a lot of our stores have closed, and so our options are a few as far as buying, and I'll, I mean, that's kind of a go-to for a lot of families, especially if you have girls, young ladies, to be able to purchase leggings in this area. I mean, they do serve the purpose for them, so absolutely.
And also for men, the added of the, more of a cargo-style pants, the pants without the pockets that are.
Men and women.
Men and women, right, right.
But are we opening up a little subjectivity here because we're removing bottoms that are more than one size too large, too loose? We're removing that, so they can wear that, but we're keeping tight.
So, so there's a difference in how that appears in fit was the reason why we changed that, and actual comfortability for students, because it, it's very hard to tell if something is too large based on a person and how they wear their clothes, where if something is way too tight, you can clearly see that.
Marla, that also, another reason that was taken out is really because the redundancy to the other, the third, the, the third bullet, which will now be the second bullet, bottoms of any type of material that are form-fitting to the body, is remaining, and so there was a feeling from some on the committee that that could be redundant.
That's true.
Under bullet point six, under shirts and tops, tops that are school athletic or activity apparel, I believe we meant to strike that as well. So it'd be shirts, tops, dresses. We struck tops that are T-shirts, except school T-shirts on designated days.
Correct, because they're going to be wear, be able to wear those more often, yes.
Yes, so it's, it's not struck in the policy, but I believe we struck it during the meeting because it's the same type, it, it, it goes with bullet point five.
Except for designated days.
Except by members of school, recognized school groups on designated day. So basically, school spirit days will be considered every day if it's a.
Correct, so we, that, yes, you're right. And we try to capture everything.
That last piece in the parentheses should be out, that's what you're saying. Not the school athletic top, but the second part, okay.
And I do want to say thank you, Ms. Pageant, for all your work on this dress code.
I, I appreciate that, Esther. I appreciate that.
Got it, got it, got it, got it. I see, yes, 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 okay.
We speak to material in here, and I just was deciding to ask in India, so what kind of material do we say is acceptable?
So tell me where you're at, Sue.
Eight.
So usually when we think about material, you could be fully in dress code and a collared shirt, but the material could be see-through, which would not be a good look then. That's why we have to address material.
Or denim.
That, that's correct, denim as well, which we haven't added, so. Okay, sorry, Sue. So I find one under bottoms that says bottoms that are sheer or see-through, and that's a similar thing under the tops you can wear.
Okay, and then it'd be under pants, skirt, dresses, bottom. Bottoms of any type of material that are form-fitting to the body.
Third bullet. Third bullet.
Okay.
On page eight.
Yes, that's correct, so remind me of your question now, Sue.
So what type of material is acceptable?
So it, it can't be see-through, it, it has to have the pockets or what would look like pockets, and the actual, there's some defining things that we don't all need to see.
But I would say in defense of that, Lycra workout pants now have pockets.
Yeah, we did discuss that, but that, that's not part, if you go over to where we're at with, that's also an athletic-type thing? Workout pants, Lycra workout pants, so we're still covered there, Sue.
I thought this was just referring to the, the being form-fitting, not, not really discussing the material so much.
Right.
Right, you say bottoms that are form-fitting.
Okay, we could do that, that's, that's fine.
I, I, I mean, we don't have material, please. I mean.
No, we really don't. You, you can see, you can clearly see in most cases when, when a material is inappropriate.
Right.
It's pretty readily visible.
So, yeah, so why do we even have it?
Of any type of material.
Yes, correct.
Right, thank you.
All right.
And then for the, just so I'm clear, can I wear a Minnesota Viking shirt?
No, ma'am.
No, okay. No, okay.
It's got the only school district shirts.
Now, I am going to counter that just a little bit. Let's say, for example, right, right. Let's say, for example, that there's a day that the school requests where everybody, it's like, it's like homecoming or elementary schools or middle schools have days where they allow people to do a different thing, like everybody wear your favorite team. But they have to ref, they have to come to student services to get permission to do that. Even our homecoming days have to be given permission, yes, we'll let you do this, yes, we won't. So there could be a time where you might be able to wear your Minnesota Vikings jersey.
And and then you could wear Irving Falcon if you're in high school.
You sure could.
Okay.
You absolutely could.
When they win the Super Bowl.
Oh, jeez.
It's it's taking a bad turn now.
Yeah, it has, all right. Thank you for presenting this. Like I said, we're not voting on this tonight, this is our first reading, we have our second reading the next meeting, so thank you very much, and those changes are duly, those corrections are duly noted.
Absolutely, thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
I appreciate getting the timing out so the families have seen us, because we're going by going for next year, they are not surprised.
Right, we can't be doing that in September.
Right.
Right, and and that was part of our trying to get moving on this, so we absolutely could be timed.
Thank you. Great, thank you. All right, the next um item on our agenda is the resolution for the East High request to join the newly formed Athletic Conference. And this recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the resolution requesting the formation of a new Athletic Conference for schools to include Waterloo East High School, beginning with the 2020-2023 school year.
So.
Thanks, Esther, and a second?
Second.
Yeah, wonderful. And um I know that we have a lot of people in the audience, and I know we've got both athletic directors here, we also have Mr. Huff here this evening. If the board has any questions, one thing I just want to say uh to start is um how proud I am of this process and the fact that this wasn't made in a silo. Um this decision was not um, you know, made on the cover of a night or on the cover, we say. Um we've had community meetings, we've talked to coaches, we've talked to parents, we've talked to athletic directors, we've talked to administrators, we've talked to other districts. The board has really been out, I think, hearing a lot about this. And so I just want to thank everyone who's been involved in doing the due diligence to bring this forward tonight and to allow the best experience for our student athletes, because that's what we're all here to do is, you know, do the best for our kids. So um with that, board, do you have questions for our athletic director or Mr. Huff?
Just approximately how long have we been talking about this? Give or take?
Um, at least six months, if not longer.
Okay.
Um, there were some stakeholder meetings that happened back in the winter. I feel like COVID has compressed my brain, and I can't remember exactly when those meetings happened, but Dan, would you correct me? Do you know when those, they in February?
Would you mind coming to the mic, thank you, so that we can.
Well, I didn't mean to.
Prior to this year, I know there's been, and and Tim can attest and some of the other folks, that they've been looking at potential uh different conference alignments. This specific issue started at the end of February, when it was determined that uh in the Des Moines Register, they set the five Des Moines school, public schools, plus Marshalltown, Fort Dodge, Ames, Mason City, and the Tumblad wanted to leave the CIML and start their own conference. So that sparked interest here in in our uh district about, you know, the possibility, hey, would we be interested in that? And then probably sometime shortly after that, Dr. Lindeman received an informal inquiry, would Waterloo schools be interested in joining that? Uh that sparked us to have a an athletic director's meeting. And then we also then had a meeting at East High with the coaches, administrators, community members, parents, and then we did the same at West High. And then it was kind of, is it, we were waiting on a formal invitation, which came a couple, about a week ago. And then there was a parent meeting and community meeting all that east. Tim put together, did a really nice job uh last week, Tuesday, I believe, Monday or Tuesday.
Yes, and let's go a step further, so it's kind of gives some background in why they decided to form this out of the CIML. Oh, yeah.
So I'm sorry.
As I said, can you just kind of give some background, why did they decide to step away from the other conference?
Great question, and and if Tim, if you ever want to jump in here. Here's what we what we really saw was the the schools, looking at the history of the CIML, for example, when Fort Dodge and Ames and Mason City and Marshalltown were part of the Big Eight with Waterloo schools and Cedar Falls, you know, we had Central all the time, so three Waterloo schools and and Cedar Falls. Um, they decided, hey, we're going to get into this Des Moines Central Iowa Metro League. At that time, that Fort Dodge got into that in their ninety-three or so, in reading the history, a school like Waukees had like two hundred and eighty-eight students. Now they've got two high schools. So they they felt like, hey, we're we're struggling a little bit. They they kind of came up with a term, the suburban schools versus what they call the non-suburban schools. And they look at the major sports, wouldn't include football, because football's uh scheduled on the district side. But major sports, girls' basketball, boys' basketball, wrestling, soccer, baseball, softball. Over the last five years, uh the teams that are leaving that conference had like, I'm just going off of memory now, like three hundred and sixty wins out of eight, almost nineteen hundred losses for a winning percentage of sixteen point five percent. That means those schools, they played a hundred games, a hundred contests, they would win about sixteen, seventeen games. So that was their emphasis, they just thought, you know, we want to create a better experience for our, for the students. So the mission of all of high school athletics is to create a positive experience. By creating that positive experience, we think it would grow with the numbers and the participant, participation numbers. Uh so that's really what what kind of spurred this on.
Thank you.
Can you talk a little bit about the combined sports and what that would look like?
Great question. Right now, we have boys' and girls' cross-country is combined sport with West and East. We have girls' and boys' swimming are combined. We have boys' tennis is combined, and girls' soccer is combined. Uh what, in in talking with Tim and the and the folks at East High and West High, is the more kids that participate in these things and are able to do them at their home school and and eliminate some of the travel times, our goal would be, I think East High's goal would be to, you know, have enough kids to have a boys' and girls' cross-country team, to have a tennis, uh their own boys' tennis team. Uh there are also, you know, we look at, you know, girls' soccer, could could they have enough girls? The team ones are going to be a little tricky, the team ones where you need, you know, twenty kids, that might be a little trickier to do right away, but we could maybe build it and and increase our numbers in soccer. Um and if it turned out that there needed to be a a shared team, what we would do is just whoever had the most kids in that particular uh team uh would just be hosted there. That's kind of what the others' conferences do. Uh they they they, you know, like Iowa City Liberty and Iowa City West share swimming, and it's just Iowa City West, they they call it. That answered, that was a great question.
It it does, I have a follow-up. So the district has quite a few MOUs with uh other area schools?
Sure.
Uh would those students be counted and considered in that enrollment for? So say East has a MOU with Denver, um and there's, you know, three or four young ladies that play soccer. Would those students be considered in the total number?
We would have to include Denver's ninth through eleventh grade enrollment in in that system. And I think, in most of the cases, when we do that already, we're already in the largest size. West High's in the largest category, so whoever they bring in, in, I think, girls' soccer, East High's, if their enrollment would put them in the largest size, I believe.
I mean, specific for for that sport? So are we talking about the whole, the total enrollment of the school or the number of participants that would participate in that particular sport?
If you're looking at, like, what classification would you be in?
No, no, for uh the shared programs in housing, who houses the plan?
You're saying if there were, you know, eight students from one school, four from outside of Waterloo, and, you know, four from another school or seven, where would we
Correct.
house those? I don't think, I think we would probably look at mainly the the Waterloo schools enrollment in those.
But you can't, see, if I understood you correctly, you said whichever uh student or whichever school, East or West, has a predominant, the most students, it would be, that's the conference they would be in. But you can't, that would change conferences if it was primarily located at West versus East or vice versa. You can't switch that once you start, because you're switching conferences, so scheduling would be just a nightmare, wouldn't it?
So he, so he's saying if if East had twelve one year and West has six, and then it it switches, then you would go with the next, and that was part of my question.
That's what, that's the, that would be the plan right now, and and we checked, our A D team got together, and we looked at scheduling, and we said that would be the the best way to do it. Versus saying permanently it's at one place or permanently at another.
But the but the potential, the potential to have to switch conferences every year, every other year is is there, though.
Could be.
Depends on sports, if you don't, if, I mean, the individual sports, it doesn't impact quite as much on scheduling, like, you know, track or cross-country or something like that, you know.
I I have a couple of questions. First of all, it with the new um, the newly formed, where does East stand as enrollment compared to the other schools?
Um, we, East High, I got it right here. In in this situation, um and we don't have any, there's no private schools in the new conference. Private school enrollment is a little different, because they can have people go there just for that particular reason. But uh Mason City, for example, on the last beds, was eight hundred and sixteen. Des Moines Hoover was seven hundred and eighty-three. Mason, uh Atumland was nine fifty-five, and East was seven ninety-three. So East, and then there's some Des Moines schools that have some larger numbers, but uh it it hasn't led them to be dominant or successful. We looked at enrollment, we looked at socioeconomic status, free and release lunch, as as some things, and and those were some some big things that really stood out in comparing the two.
And then as far as driving, do we allow athletes to drive to the events currently?
No.
No. So this would not change that, create more drive time, just parents and spectators?
We sometimes allow them to drive to like, if West's playing East, they might drive, the East might drive where to West, West might drive where to East. Cedar Falls, those are the only ones we allow anybody to drive themselves. And that's kind of on a case-by-case basis, too.
And then lastly, I see a lot of support from East High athletes, former athletes, coach, and appreciate all being here. So the sentiment of all of you is that it's a great thing for East High, is that correct? Maybe T- Tim and.
Hello, everyone. First of all, I would like to just say thank you for allowing us this opportunity to consider this uh uh joining of of this new conference. It's gonna, I believe, if our coaches, I guess I could speak for them, but I think it's going to allow us the opportunity to pretty much level the playing field. Not that, and I don't want anybody to think that our mindset is we're just going to walk into this conference and it's going to be a cakewalk. We all unders, we all unders, understand the the importance of of our jobs and the commitment that it's going to take to take East High to another level. And I think everybody, I I shouldn't say I think, I believe that everybody in here that coaches at East High would say the same thing. So I'm extremely excited. Um, I've talked to several of our student athletes at East High, several of the parents uh at baseball games and softball games, and everyone is just super supportive of this idea of of us joining this new conference. So I'm extremely excited. I mean, this is, as a, as a first-year A D, this has just fallen into my lap. I mean, this is by no word that I put in to make this possible, I'm just, I'm just happy where we're at. And I'm happy where our our athletic programs are moving forward to. Uh I think this is a great opportunity, and this is a great time uh for us to to make this transition to this new conference. So I have uh Charlie Aldrich, a dear friend of mine, that would like to come up and say a few words as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moses. Yeah, I am a graduate of East High School and coached uh probably over twenty-five years either football, girls' basketball, boys' basketball, and I was on the committee when you got together there. And I know it was East High, a hundred percent, we want to do it, and West decided to stay where they want to do it, that's their choice. But I do want to mention, uh I'd like to thank the district A D, Dan Huff, and Tim Moses and the others for staying persistent with it, because at the beginning, if I believe Dr. Lindeman, they asked both of us to get in. And at the time, I wasn't sure, by only having one get in, whether they accepted or not, because it would have been an evenly balanced six and six. But uh I want to thank the both athletic directors for staying persistent with the schools in this new conference to show them the value of adding East to this conference. Their commitment to the best interests of athletics at East High is paying off with this invitation. Their continued dialogue with the conference school and personnel has shown them the advantage of East High and should be committed for the impactful work they did and the rest of you did also. Uh another point that I think needs to be brought up is that East has a very, very solid and very good coaching staff, and this move maintains and can attract additional coaches to work athletically at East High School in a conference with a level playing field. And I think Mr. Huff had said that you had asked about how it would work, and he said within a hundred games, these other schools won like sixteen. Now, how many good coaches are going to stay at a school when you win sixteen out of a hundred games? But now with a level playing field, it'll it'll attract and maintain good quality coaches, which East High School deserves. I want to wish best wishes to West High School as they uh continue to pursue the athletic excellence in the Mississippi Valley Conference. But we'd like to just say the best wishes to the Trojan athletes and coaches, as this is a great move, really a great move for East High School. So thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
Let me introduce my former high school coach, Roger Kelson.
He likes to point that out, doesn't he?
Yeah, I've been here a while. I don't know if, I know Lyle was here when I was coaching. I don't know if the rest of you are, sorry, Lyle. I go back to nineteen sixty-seven, when I first came to Waterloo. East High had nineteen hundred students in three grades. West High had like twenty-one hundred in three grades. And so that part has really changed over the years and time. Many reasons for that, I'm not going to get into that, but that's a perspective that we're kind of looking at right here. The other thing is, I was an interim athletic director along with Bob Sidens from West when we decided to go into the Mississippi Valley. Basically, it was no choice for us to do that, because Mason City, Fort Dodge, Ames, Newton, I think at the time, Marshalltown, decided to go into the uh Des Moines area league. So we got into this mainly because we were pushed into it. Traditionally, going back, Mason City, Fort Dodge, uh Ames, Cedar Falls, West, later Central, we were all into the conference, and basically, we're somewhat going back to that area. And so I don't think it's a big jump. And that point being made, I go back to Murray Weir, who was the athletic director when I was coaching, and then after him was Tom Thorson. One year, our football team traveled to Columbia, Missouri for a football game. We went to Marshfield, Wisconsin for another one. We went to Minneapolis, Minnesota for another one. And the reason was, our conference was being upset, and we had trouble getting games. And if you don't decide to get into a conference, one way or the other, you're pretty much in the dark, especially like football, basketball, and then the, the minor sports is, you know, you could just throw that in the bag. You can't do anything as far as scheduling games. So you need to be in some type of a conference, and I think everybody pretty much agrees that. But this looks like the best fit for east high. And I would concur that, and, uh, I'll give other people an opportunity to speak to that.
I have a quick question. Um, and this might be me being naive because I really don't know, but if I'm a parent trying to decide on a, on a, on a side, east or west, um, sure, ace. Good answer. Okay. Um, what would be the pros and cons, I guess? Like, if I see west football being in this conference, Mississippi Valley versus going into east, you know, how do you, how does one decide? You know, you're in one district, and then you have these two different classes, or, does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. It makes total sense.
So, you know, win me over with the, how do you draw somebody to one versus the other?
Well, India, regardless of what conference you go to, you're gonna play good competition. The competition in the state of Iowa, again, don't, I don't want anybody to think that because we're going to this new conference, that it's gonna be a cakewalk. Ames, Fort Dodge, Marshalltown, they all have strong programs. So, I mean, it's, it's a decision that you would have to really weigh out your options. I think it then it becomes, it boils down to what school do you see fit, will fit your kid, your son or daughter, better, east or west? Uh, because both of those programs have great programs as well. So it, it, I mean, that's, it's a tough decision.
Okay.
But I mean, again, uh, this, this new conference versus the M V C, uh, it's, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a tough conference for us. And we all understand that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm, uh, William Mohammed, Coach Corey. I'm the head girls' basketball coach at east high. And I had a couple of thoughts while I was sitting back there. Whileakin also brought something to my attention in regards to, Whileakin Green, check that. Sorry. Brought something to my attention as well, and we talk about post-high school, um, and recruiting. Athletically, in the, in the M V C, the conference is really dominated by, you gave it a name, the Cedar Rapids, Iowa City schools. So when we're voting for postseason awards, Crandig or whatever, postseason awards, um, we're sometimes left out in voting, because it's just me and Dr. Pappas or the coaches of east and west, and they have like this brotherhood or whatnot. So when a kid is being recruited, you look at all-conference, all-district, different things like that, and those are things that we're, we, we sometimes get the short end of based on, not necessarily always performance, but, you know, Cedar Rapids schools, Iowa City schools, that Crandigs sticking together. And so being that, in this, forming this new conference, is more, yes, you have the five public schools of Des Moines, but there's a more variety of schools. There's just not a cluster of schools. So that's one aspect. In regards to competition, you know, what school? But, like you said, both schools are great, and it's about where your child fits in at, uh, where they're comfortable at. Um, I coach at east, obviously east is the rival west. I speak with Dr. Pappas, and I, you know, I pick his brain, been around as long as Coach Kildos. And so, that, you know, competition is a thing that keeps coming up. I'm in a Facebook group with a lot of, of old east high alumni, and they keep, they keep thinking, oh, we dropped the three A in football, we're running from competition. Has nothing to do with that. Uh, I think when you talk about numbers, I took over east high girls' basketball eight or nine years ago, we had thirteen girls, and we were playing in M V C, and we were playing Iowa City west, who was consistently in the state tournament, and we're getting beat eighty, ninety, to five, to ten. So kids don't wanna play, and that's just what it, you know, kids are not playing, because it's not fun. Not necessarily competitive, it's just not fun when it's, you know, when you're getting beat like that. And so moving into a conference of this nature, Des Moines North, I think is one hundred percent free and reduced lunch. Our, my best friend, who's an east high grad, Courtney Henderson, is the head coach at Des Moines Hoover, and we talk often. Des Moines Hoover's makeup is similar to east high's makeup, and so being more competitive, winning or losing would help bolster our numbers tremendously. Uh, if you have a daughter that likes basketball, okay. I just, I think, you know, I gotta get my advertisement in, but that's it. You know, post, post, post-graduation, you know, postseason, uh, postseason honors and different things like that, that would help us tremendously, because we break up that, uh, that, that leverage that they have with us. Thank you.
Well, I think he just made a very valid point with football. East is already in three, three A, so they're a class under the, west is four A, so, yeah.
And that, that's also true for east high's softball team, um, volleyball team, and girls' basketball team. They're, they're in four A. West and the other, most of the other M V C are five A. Some of these teams would, maybe a couple of them would be the four A like east, but... And then, yeah, the football is district-wide, yeah.
Well, thank you. I know we've asked a lot of questions and some opinions as well.
Yeah, I just wanna say one thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is really not much to the east's decision, which I, I support, and I think it's gonna be a, a good decision for the student athletes there. But I think, at a bigger picture, if you look at the number of schools here that are forming this conference, that the state, at the state level, they need to look at some type of reform in athletics, because there's definitely inequities that we can't address, which is adding more kids or that. So, um, at a bigger level, I think the state needs to look at this and say, there's schools that are recognizing we need change, and it should speak more, because there are more schools out there in similar situations as well, so.
Probably the last thing I would say is, first off, thank you for allowing us to go through this process. Also, uh, when we talked as coaches with A Ds, uh, the, the people in the M V C, the schools that are in that, the administration, the athletic directors, the coaches, they're all class act and organized and professional. So it's really, it's not a knock on the M V C, it's just what's a better fit for, for east high.
Great to say.
Then Dan, just, you're saying the conclusion of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, so would softball and baseball go?
They, they would still be, finish out that year.
Okay.
So the first thing would be in the fall.
Of twenty-two, football, volleyball?
Yes.
Yes.
Cross-country?
No, no, is football?
Football's districts.
Football's not. Football's districts.
And, and this year in football, we, even, we're not in that conference. Tim, how many teams are you playing from the new conference in football?
So Fort Dodge, Mason City?
And Des Moines North. So this year, we're already, are almost half of the football schedule is including those things, those teams.
And I did have someone call me and ask if east and west would still play in football.
Absolutely.
And will still play Cedar Falls.
And, and all the sports. And that, that doesn't preclude us from, we would certainly play west and everything, Cedar Falls, at Columbus as we do now in certain sports. In fact, it gives, it gives a little bit more flexibility probably in this to, to, for different teams based on where they're at competitively. Teams have a tendency to say, hey, these are some teams, you know, we'll go see this top-notch over here, but we also wanna see some teams, uh, that, that are gonna give us good competition. I also wanna thank all these, uh, community and coaches and, and community members from east high who have invested in this process and, and really been passionate about it along the way.
And given up a great night in the summer. We appreciate it.
I'd like to add my, my thanks to the coaches, uh, you know, uh, it's about kids from my standpoint. It's not about win-loss percentage, but extracurricular experience is, is critical to high school. Often, I talk to people and the one teacher, the one person that they remember is a coach. Because, uh, you know, so, you know, in, in terms of priority on my list, it's character development, motivation to stay in school, uh, lifelong skills, learning in some cases, and, and physical fitness. Those are the, the things we want out of the extracurricular, all extracurricular programs, but particularly athletics. But you can't do that if the kids don't come out. And as was mentioned earlier, uh, you know, it's, it's, that whole experience, uh, cannot be optimized if you never win. That's simply, you know, and, and besides that, it discourages other, other kids, and it becomes a kind of a spiraling effect. So I think this is a great initiative, and I really appreciate, uh, all the coaches in particular, but all the administrators as well, and everything that's been done. I think this is, this is probably, uh, as has been stated, a really, really good move.
Thanks. Okay, I'm making sure. No, no, I think you're good. Okay. All right, yeah, these people are saying vote already, so, all right. Thank you, Lyle. All those in favor then of approving the resolution for east high to join the newly-formed athletic conference, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, same signing. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Go Trojans. Hand clap, yeah. So, all right. As I mentioned earlier, we're going to move, we have, uh, someone here from Des Moines who needs to get about his evening as well. So we're gonna move items P, Q, and R forward on the agenda, and I'm gonna go ahead and put all of those motions on the table, because they are all regarding, um, a bond sale, and then we will discuss them. So the first motion is the Board of Education approve the resolution directing the sale of thirty-one million, nine hundred and ten thousand school infrastructure sales, service, and use tax revenue refunding bonds, series twenty-twenty-one. Thank you, Jesse, and a second. Thank you, Sue. And the next item is the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing the redemption of outstanding school infrastructure sale, service, and use tax revenue bonds, series twenty-thirteen, dated April twenty-second, twenty-thirteen, as the Waterloo Community School District, State of Iowa, and directing notice be given.
So moved.
Thanks, India, and a second.
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 And then lastly, the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing the redemption of outstanding school infrastructure sales, service, and use tax revenue refunding bonds, series twenty-seventeen, dated January thirteenth, twenty-seventeen, of the Waterloo Community School District, State of Iowa, and directing notice be given.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, India and Sue. And with that, I will turn it over to Tim.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Tim Oswald. I'm with Piper Sandler. Thank you for moving me up, by the way. Appreciate that. So this is, uh, the headline, if you will. This is refinancing for interest cost savings. You're issuing a new bond to pay off two prior bonds, and the end result of that will be a reduction in interest costs to the district after all the transactional costs of a million, seven hundred and eighty thousand. And that's over the years, fiscal years twenty-two through twenty-eight, so the next six budgetary cycles. Now pause there. Remember this, these are save bonds, so this is fund thirty-three. The million, seven eighty is not general fund dollars, it'll, that are found money. It's saved dollars that would have otherwise been spent, but now will not be spent. And so it will accrue to the district, and you'll use it to cover project-related costs in the future. So, um, doing okay so far? Okay, so you started this process, uh, a few months ago, uh, and I suggested at the time that we should go forward and sell a, a conventional bond issue, um, public bond. And, um, we went down that path. And as we got closer to today, um, we went back and looked at, are there banks offering rates that are reasonably attractive, that allow us to sidestep the public bond offering process? You maybe produce a little bit better results, but even if not better results, at least accomplish the same results, but with less pain and suffering. And, um, the, you know, times change, um, and so what seemed like a good idea in January doesn't seem like such a good idea as, as time has gone on. And what we saw are banks getting in, back into the market of providing save loans as our economy continued to open up and be competitive with their interest rates. And so once we realized that there was a viable option, and we could probably produce better economics, we reached out to the district to say, hey, let's pivot, let's go in a slightly different direction. And I wanna thank Michael particularly for, and, and you, for agreeing to the pivot, uh, in, on fairly short order. So anyway, the loan is with Regions Bank, um, and the interest rate on the loan is one point one four percent. And this pays off two prior bonds, uh, that were issued, one of which was actually a refinancing in twenty-seventeen for interest savings. So this is round two for that particular bond, and the other was issued in twenty-thirteen. This will be the first refinancing of that issue. And my memory, as I age, I use that word with an asterisk, but my memory is that we, that was Orange Elementary School, uh, twenty-thirteen. So anyway, uh, when it's all said and done, there will be one issue outstanding, uh, for thirty million, uh, two hundred and eighty-one thousand at interest rate of one point one four. That's all locked in, um, as of today, obviously subject to your approval. And it will be with Regions Bank. So let me pause and see if you have any questions.
Tim, I wanna go back to what you said about the saved money, because I think it's an important distinction, that this isn't money that's going back into the general fund, it's money that's going back into the saved funds, and those dollars, you know, that's a, that's a smaller fund, but certainly one that's earmarked for us for some projects along the way.
Yeah, so, you know, saved for you is a multimillion dollar a year income stream, and, and, but it's three hundred thousand this year, and five hundred thousand that year, and five hundred, and so it does accumulate. And it is, those dollars not spent on interest are dollars you will spend somewhere on your infrastructure.
Which is why I feel like it's a double benefit
Right.
for us, to not only get rid of the debt, but then it allows us to have those saved dollars at hand.
Right.
Great. Thank you.
So if I could, one more, and then I'll leave you alone. The, the bank loan exercise, I do wanna hit that, um, the rate, that one point one four percent rate is actually lower than what we could have achieved in the marketplace. Had we gone and sold a public offering, we, the bank loan offer is saving us about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in and of itself. And so had we gone to the market today, we'd have probably achieved a savings of somewhere around a million and a half. Instead, with the bank loan, we're almost a million eight. And so I do wanna, I, I'm, I'm happy that that outcome has come about, and, and obviously you can see that wasn't available when we started, or we started down this path originally. I hope you recognize that, I guess.
So total savings between, your estimate is one point eight million to refinance these two bonds to this one bond?
Correct.
Perfect.
Now, to be fair, when we started, it was slightly over two million, so let's be, let's make sure we're honest about.
But again, I'll take one point eight. That's a...
Yeah, so why?
So we're talking just about exhibit P right now, right?
Yes, so, um, yes, we were doing P. So, so Q and R, thanks for raising that. So Q and R are similar resolutions, so, um, insofar as you have, once you've approved the bank loan, you then have to take the action to give notice to the prior bondholder that you're paying them off. Well, we call, we call it a call, a calling bond. Your lawyer draws those out, because there's two old bonds, they're two separate resolutions.
So technically, we're just paying off the Q and R, and those will be clear and free, and we'll have P as our option?
Yep. Yep.
But the amount, the amount of P alone... But the amount, the amount of P alone was thirty-one million nine ten in this exhibit.
I was wondering if you noticed that. Yeah, so when we start the process, a lot of times we don't, we don't know the exact numbers. Will the, will the bank require a reserve fund, for example? Won't they require a reserve fund? What are the transaction costs? I have a pretty good idea, but I don't know for certain. We typically set the initial documents at a, at a dollar amount higher. And, and then your lawyers insist on holding that dollar amount through today's action. But when you get to the next action, at the special meeting in June, then that number will say thirty million two hundred and eighty-one thousand. So that's how they draw the line from start to finish.
So it's kind of when we set the rates, we can lower it, Lyle, but we can't raise it. So that's the top bar and then it'll go down.
Correct.
Okay, but so now we have P for the thirty million, the new number. Thirty million two hundred and eighty-one thousand. And that's, that, when was that fixed?
The bank gave us a final quote on Friday.
Okay.
Yep.
And so, and that's good for like thirty days or something?
We have to close by, after the June meeting. There's a date specific that we can meet.
All right. So then how does that relate, if at all, to Item Q, the ten million?
So P and Q reference the original dollar amount of those two bonds, not the current dollar amount outstanding. So you've made payments on both of those two prior bonds. So the, we're paying off what's left of those two issues.
So when we issued it, it was forty-three million.
Yeah. R.
Bear with me here, I have the number. The outstanding balance on the ten million issue, which I think is Q. It was ten million originally. It's two point one one million that remains outstanding that's being paid off. The outstanding on the other one is twenty-eight million nine hundred and eight.
So Item Q is the redemption of the outstanding bond. Item P is the sale. That's buying the new bond, right? P. Q is telling the existing people, we're redeeming them, right? And. R is. Redemption of the other bond.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
And they require that, even though I put them all three out, Lyle, and that's why it's a roll call vote. They put them out that they have to have separate, even though there's one note paying the two off, we have to have separate resolutions for both the payoffs.
You can't do it without the other. Okay.
I'm hoping that you vote yes on all three or no on all three and not, not some combination.
I understand that, but I'm just telling you what, what my rules are. Yeah. Somebody has to earn a fee, come on. Tim, thank you for that. So, Board, let's, let's, to be clear, let's start with Item P, which is on page seventy-four. And that, that's the resolution for the thirty-one nine, thirty-one million nine hundred and ten thousand. So that is the bond Series 2021.
At one point one four.
At one point one four, yes.
So do we need to change the thirty-one to thirty-two eighty-one?
You don't need to. You can't, that's a discussion you can have with your attorney. That, that's their suggested language and I, I didn't want to ask him to tinker with it.
Okay. So all those in favor, and this is going to be a roll call vote, of approving Item P. So I'll start with India.
Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Aster?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yes.
Shanley, yes. Motion carried. That takes us then to Item Q, which is on page seventy-six. Well, actually, the resolution's on page seventy-seven. And this is the resolution to redeem the outstanding Series 2013 from April twenty-second of 2013. So all those in favor, again, please signify. Director Johnson?
Yes.
And Jesse?
Yes.
And Sue?
Yes.
And Aster?
Yes.
And Lyle?
Yes.
And Shanley, yes. That motion carries. So look, Tim, we're two for, two for three at this point. So we'll get to Item R then. And that is, this is the redemption of the Series 2017 from January thirteenth of 2017. So again, a roll call vote. And India?
Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Aster?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yes.
And Shanley is yes. Motion carried. So Items P, Q, and R, all pass. Thank you again, Tim. We appreciate it. Three up, three down. Always happy to save some money. So. All right, that takes us now back to our consent agenda, which this evening has nine items on it. The minutes of the May twenty-fourth, 2021 regular board meeting, this is Item E. Personnel Appointments and Adjustments, Item F. Bills Due and Payable and Bills Paid Between Board Meetings, Item G. The Iowa Association of School Boards, 2021, 2022 Membership Dues, Item H. The Iowa School Finance Information Services, 2021, 2022 Subscription Fee, Item I. The Urban Education Network, 2021 and 2022 Membership Dues, Item J. The Sloan Wallace Stadium Demolition Project, Item K. Setting the date of the public hearing for the new Lowell Elementary Furniture Bids, Item L. And the Central Middle School Remodel and the Waterloo Career Center Expansion Project Change Order Number One, which is Item M. So could I please have a motion to place those items on the table?
So moved.
Aster and Jesse? And Jesse, yep. And are there any items the board members wish to have removed? I'm going to start by removing Items K and M. And I don't know if there are any others.
Item F, Foxtrot.
F is in Foxtrot, all right. All right, then all those in favor of approving Items E, G, H, I, J, and L, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us to Item F, which is on page nineteen.
I move the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed.
So moved. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. And discussion?
So I'm assuming all the contract information is said and done right now?
In relation to?
The ones that are going to be renewed have been renewed. We've got our resignations firmed up. We've got our retirements firmed up.
For the most part, yes. I mean, there's still people that are resigning based on job opportunities and other things. This is kind of the period that we work through the process of suitable replacement. So we are, we're still hiring. We're still in the height of our hiring season. I believe Lorene, last week, she said she was Oprah. She felt like she was giving everybody a job just by the calls that she was making. And so this is still, you're still not seeing an adequate output of all the names that have filled positions. Again, you'll see that potentially at our next board, board agenda, but also because we're waiting on licenses as well, in July as well.
So the number of contracts that have been renewed, is that about low expectations? How did that come out?
I think it's, again, I think some of the data that I shared with you as far as resignations typically, where they've been up is very similar from where it's been in previous years. It's just different than it was last year, just because a lot of people stuck in state. And so if you saw, it was kind of an inverted triangle where I think it was around ninety-five, ninety-eight or so. And then it dipped to about sixty or so, and then it's back up to about that ninety-five range. And so it's again, what you did see that is troubling from the data I shared with you, it is going up. And so I think your question you're getting to is, how are we, you know, it seems like we're doing a pretty good job of keeping our people in the one to maybe four to five-year range. But what are we doing to keep the people in the six to ten, six to fifteen-year range? Because that's where, again, you're really getting into, you know, honing your craft as far as being a teacher. A lot of that, I think, is what we're trying to address in the strategic plan about what other opportunities can we have to empower many of our teachers to feel like they're getting leadership roles or other things. So they're not looking elsewhere to get those leadership opportunities.
I see we only have one retirement this, this, this board meeting. I don't remember, I don't think we've had a whole lot this year, have we?
We haven't. It's been a small number of retirements. And that, I think that even the retirement party included last year and this year, just because it's such a small number.
Any particular reason for that?
Not necessarily. I mean, I think it's, again, you know, we, Michael, I can't remember when, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, we had our early retirement. And so that really pushed many of our teachers that were closer to that threshold out, that you would see maybe a larger pattern of matriculation now. Again, it's coming up to that time where people may be asking some of those questions about early retirement again, given another two years potentially. But nothing that I see that's different than other years as far as that's concerned. But I think, Lyle, again, to your point, I think there's some meat around what we need to do around our mid, our mid experience level folks. And again, a lot of that is just leadership opportunities. It's not that people are leaving to go to maybe similar positions elsewhere. They're leaving for a greater level of responsibility. And so we have a large organization and there's many, many things that we can be doing as far as maybe providing those opportunities. So we need to look into what we can do and make sure that people feel supported. And we, this is just coming off of, and not to believe the point because it was a long meeting, this is just coming off of an entire day that Dr. Warren put together around organizational health, climate and culture. It's definitely where we're going to spend the majority of our, our time. Dr. Lindman did an amazing presentation on, again, how we can model tough conversations in our building around not only what we as administrators are doing, but also what kind of feedback, what is the culture and climate in our building to ensure there's a healthy flow of information, a healthy flow of support. So this is just the start of how we're trying to attack that, again, mid-level experience group and make sure that people are sticking and staying in Waterloo.
Okay, thank you. And I just had one question. As far as, I just noticed on the certified hires, there are five Kittrel teachers. Do you go building by building or did that just happen that Kittrel had that many resigns and, and rehires?
Yeah, we had a couple of buildings that had just more resignations than normal. And again, it ebbs and flows. Kittrel typically hasn't had that, and this year it did. There's some other buildings. Highland had some. Cunningham had a few, again, that were greater than the overall average resignations. But it's tough. Again, you know, if, if COVID wasn't an issue, there's people that I think would have left last year. Again, as I told you, maybe a couple meetings ago, there are some buildings we know that people, literally, as you look down the list, moving away, moving away, moving away, out of state, out of state, job opportunity elsewhere. And so there isn't something that is, has been a call or alarm. But that goes back to some of the, we're still looking at how we can maybe extrapolate some of our extracurricular survey data and look deeper into what's happening at respective buildings, look into the climate survey information, and look at longitudinal from that standpoint, but also look at the recent information that we just got from the market before they're leaving and see, is there anything that we're missing? Is there anything that we can do? And I think there's some opportunities there, for sure.
Thank you. All right. So all those in favor of the personnel appointments and adjustments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us then to Item K. And the recommended motion here is the Board of Education approve the Sloan Wallace Stadium Demolition Project and publish a notice to bidders.
So moved.
Thank you, Jesse. Like, a second?
Second.
Thank you, India. And discussion? I know we heard from some people earlier, and I appreciate you Irving folks hanging out with us while we get to this. Thank you. I like your T-shirts, by the way. Board, do you have things you'd like to say before we vote?
I think the idea of memorializing as much as we can is really valid. And, you know, there were some ideas floated as they were talking. You know, I don't know if we're going to have a walking track for the public or on the outside, but you could have, you know, exercise stations or displays of, you know, those, those key events in, in some sort of a manner. I don't know. You know, narrow it down to a dozen or so maybe. And, and really, you know, make them a predominant part of that walking track where you, you kind of go through. You can't really, you know, miss them, so to speak. Put, put some names up there. I mean, that's going to be a challenge in itself as to sorting all that out. But I, I really think, you know, we, we try to offer kids, two kids, everybody, I guess, you know, two things, roots and wings. And I think that was clearly stated, well-stated, there's roots there that are really worthy of, of passing on to, to new generations or even people that just haven't new to the community or just haven't thought about it for a long time. So, so I really think, I don't know that that would necessarily, I don't think it would, would affect the demolition other than doing a really good search of what, if anything, is there that we want to, we want to maintain or salvage or repurpose for some reason. I don't know that that's, but I'm thinking of some, some new ways to memorialize some of, some of the, the great history that that has had. So I'm not sure quite how it affects, I don't think it affects the demolition itself other than, other than in the bid process or prior to the bid process. We may very well want to take a new look at, at what can.
Be salvaged.
Yeah.
Well, we, we have some history doing that at both Lowell and at Orange, where we've memorialized some things that were important in the building, whether it's the scoreboard or, as you said, maybe it's, it's a timeline. I know Sue and I spoke, we both have heard from our community as well as some people tonight about being able to perhaps even have a ceremony, like a final closing ceremony. Or maybe they want to organize that. Maybe we could have bricks available. I mean, obviously we have to be safe. So I think there are some opportunities.
But I think a multi-station, I mean, I think it's something larger than the normal because I think it deserves something larger than a normal.
Well, and I received three calls on this today and an email. And, and someone suggested the limestone because it was made with a lot of limestone in those corners because that was always predominant. When you came into the stadium was the corners made of limestone. And then potentially like stations, a funny fact is it's a fifth mile track there. It's not a quarter mile track. So I ran junior high track there. Believe that I did that, but I hated it. But anyway, and you would go around for a quarter mile, you would go around once and farther to finish the quarter mile. You know, and that's a historic that a lot of people have never probably heard of a fifth mile track, you know? So just little history things. And, and like Mr. Me, he said, you know, a lot of the alumni. And I had, someone called me that was, their band performed there all the time. And I remember junior high band, we practiced under the bleachers. You know, that's what we practiced was in, that was the band room. So there's, you know, but they said, one said, it was really time to go, but consider saving the limestone and brick. Maybe a simple structure with a patio and a walkway. Modern art and maybe get someone at the Career Center to do a structure to put there. So I got, and obviously the Courier had indicated saving the scoreboard, which would be cool. But just all the alumni there that, I mean, I remember Reggie Roby kicking field goals, you know? He boomed it into the neighborhood, you know? It was true.
Then you should leave a goalpost somewhere in.
Yeah. But so I just think if we could, like you said, the history and, but I think for the Irving staff, because I went to Irving when it was Irving, and then I went to West Junior, and there isn't much of a play yard there. And those kids deserve that. And they deserve to make a garden or something that they want there. So I just, I think it's time. I think the article very eloquently said that because it had its purpose. And, but I think now as far as the neighborhood also around there, it, it, they've been, yeah, patient, but it, it deserves to be beautified and to be used now for a different. it, it, they've been, yeah, patient, but it, it deserves to be beautified and to be used now for a different purpose that we can honor the history, but have a new purpose and have those kiddos have a little more area to run and play and make it their own, because they have busy streets around them.
You know, I didn't spend, you know, obviously, I'm not, didn't grow up here, but didn't spend much time there. But, you know, in recent years, when I was running youth football in Waterloo, we spent a lot of time at Sloan Wallace, and that, that field served a really good purpose for us then. It's been nice that those programs have been able to now move on to use the main stadium and some of our underfield sites like Carver, which has a really nice field, nice track. Really, probably the second best track in the, maybe in the Hobbit Cedar Valley. But, you know, even the end, you know, we, you know, I had concerns, you know, before, you know, I was on board at, you know, parts of the stadium. Like, we don't really want, you know, fans sitting, particularly in the visitor section and stuff. So I think it's good that we're, you know, making these steps. I know it's a lot of history, and I don't want to say the history's not important, but, you know, there's other elements there. And also the community here, we have, you know, we have a number of residents that live there along the stadium. And, you know, we may be able to open that space up for them and, you know, add some visibility to their homes and stuff, and pre-parking for Irving staff, you know? Move parking a little bit closer, span the playground. It didn't, like I said, open up for a lot of kids in the community, a lot of kid density in those neighborhoods, even kids that don't go to Irving or kids that are at Kitchell and Lowell are not too far away from that site there, so.
So if, if that's suggested, it's open to the public, I mean, there's room there to construct one or two or five structures. And I don't know if there's much film left, but those structures could have internally the screens in which some of these activities would, would show, you know, people walking around the track and stopping and resting. And, I don't know, there's, there's a lot of things. I just think we kind of need an outline of that whole plan of what we're going to do to prevent demolishing something that we want to save.
Lyle, would you be willing to champion that through the facilities committee?
Sure.
I think that's a good start.
Sure, yeah.
And someone else had.
And you too, as well. I don't, I don't.
As far as even if we wanted to have a donation, if they want bricks, if they want part of it, you know, that would help for the vitification and the improvement of it too, if someone decided they wanted to help that way.
Although it's been said several times, the importance of memorializing. I also want to let the community know that we do appreciate the past. We do. I'm not sure how the vote will go, but I got an idea. But appreciating the past, but I think it's time to progress toward the future. When I, when I first got on the board, I was approached by a young lady. I think this was the first thing that a community member said to me, was, she was employee at Irving, and they didn't have any playground. I wasn't aware of that. And it went so far as to when the old Longfellow School was being demolished and that playground equipment was there, they would, they wanted to take the old Longfellow equipment and place it somewhere at Irving. So I think, looking at it, those, those students, those future students, community members, neighborhood, that staff deserve that, to say the least, that, that. And like I said, the, the past and the history of Sloan Wallace. I know my first high school football game was at Sloan Wallace, so I, I understand it, being a community member or, or being from this community, with family members that, you know, played at the stadium and have great memories. My mom tells me about walking from how the east students would walk to Sloan Wallace from the east side, and the west students would walk the west side, and they would meet up there with, with some of the tensions that were going on in the city. And I believe Mr. Pearson spoke to that as well. But progressing toward the future is never a bad thing, and I think those students deserve that, so.
I'll just end and say that it's a long time coming. You know, I remember my daughter being in fourth grade, and they kind of fundraised to get equipment, and it never happened. But I will also say that the ideas that are coming off of this, to be creative, to make this happen. You tell these stories, but there are a lot of kids who don't know the history. And so to put in a, you know, some monitors or create, be creative with it, this is giving them the opportunity to really know the history beyond just the book, but the conversation that can come after when you're walking around the track. So, I mean, we can definitely be challenged. We're going to be challenged to do this, but the outcome will be so beautiful, because the ideas that are shared, I'm taking notes right now, and I'm like, yes, let's do this committee. Because we can, no, seriously, because we can really make some beautiful things, you know, so everybody can share and then have the conversation. We can make it bilingual, so it will be in Spanish and Bosnian, and so I love the idea.
And I think we should have a, I just had Pam pull up the history of Mr. Sloan Wallace. And I think we need a Sloan Wallace garden or plaza or something there that, because he really did a lot for the district, so.
He died, he died in office. Super did it.
Yeah. In twenty-six, or, don't be alluding to anything.
No. I think he's probably the only one.
Okay, all right. Now we've gone down the path. This is what happens when we're still sitting here at seven, so. All right. Does anybody else have anything to say? I think these have all been excellent points. I really appreciate, like I said, the staff being here tonight. I appreciate the comments from our community. We have heard you. We are listening, and we're going to take this back and, and make something great, so. All right. Then all those in favor of approving the Sloan Wallace Stadium demolition project, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried.
And thank you Irving staff for enduring this long. We, we love your school. You guys are doing an awesome job.
Get that playground off of it, so.
Yay.
Yay. Yeah. All right. Then the next item that I'm taking us to is item M, and this is the change order. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education approve Central Middle School remodel, Waterloo Career Center Expansion Change Order Number One, as presented, moving substantial project completion to March first of twenty twenty-four.
So move.
And a second? Thank you, Sue.
So care.
Thanks, India. Kate and Mr. Larson are both here. Yeah, I was like, where'd he go? There he is. I let him in. Yes, if you wouldn't mind, I think this is important, because it's such a large project for us, to just reiterate why this is occurring. I know we've got supply chain, and I've heard that all over the country, but would you just articulate that for us?
I'm Doug Larson with Larson Construction. And anyway, first off, I just want to start and say, we are really excited to do another school for Waterloo School District. We are currently doing the Lowell School, and we've had some supply issues there as well. We've been able to come over, overcome a lot of those issues, epoxy tracks, so we've had some insulation issues and things like that. This one, unfortunately, we are not going to be able to, to, to figure something out, to, to make it work, to be honest with you. We bid the job, I think it was April twenty-second or something like that. We were low. Immediately, immediately we called and, and ordered our structural steel, because that has been our lead, lead issues. And we got told January third, this is the first of twenty twenty-two, is the first time we could have joined, which is absolutely the longest lead time we've ever been, we've ever had. And I was like, I cannot build a school in six months. And we have to have the joists to put the walls up. I mean, we can't even get an advantage to, to build the walls early and just let it sit, unfortunately, because it's total pre-cast. I think if vision's on an awesome job on the school, we're excited to do it. We bid another project as, as an example, May twenty-fifth. It's for the Walkie School District, eight-nine new school there, and we were actually low on that as well. And we cannot get a joist until April of twenty twenty-two, which is eleven months. So in one month, four, add four more months to it. So it's just an unfortunate thing that's happening in the construction industry. And we went to, so everybody knows, we did some of our due diligence. The Lowell manufacturer was Volcraft, the new core Volcraft, and they were January first. We went to the second, bar joist and deck supplier. Theirs was February. Then the third one, which is typically, there's three we get in the area, did not bid it, and that was, that's canyon. And so that's where we stand. It's unfortunate. And I think our track record would say, hey, we want to push jobs and get them done. I said Lowell's another example, where I think we actually got to the school about six weeks late because of the demolition. And we came up with some value engineering items to, to get the, get the project done. And so, yeah, that's, that's where we're at today, and it's unfortunate. But I wanted to be transparent, so you guys could plan. That's, that was important, and I called immediately and we found it out, so.
So reasonably, how do you feel these dates are?
What's that? I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't.
Yeah, reasonably then, just moving at six months, i- is that enough?
Yes. Yep, that will be enough, yep.
Do we have the staff also?
Once, once we have that date, once we have that date set, they will, they are committed to that, yep. And we've been very stern with that, so.
So I know these are kind of different times, but it, it's not common practice to verify delivery before bidding?
A lot of times we can, a lot of times we can't. This, this one here, we, I can show you the quote exactly, but says on it, "To be determined." Once we issue that purchase order, then they will commit to it. So we did, yep, that's where we're at.
So when were you able to start out there?
We actually mobilized last week, and we actually have our one-call meeting today. And I will be mobilizing equipment out there. We're going to start excavation here very shortly, within a week or so, yep.
I'll just ask about staff. Just, do you have enough staff to be able to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's been a concern also, not just supplies, but just making sure we have enough man or woman power to be able to do this.
Yep, manpower is short, but we're, we're fine, yep.
Gives you a few extra months to gear even further up.
Pardon me?
Gives you a few extra months to gear even further up.
That's right. Yeah, we're more frustrated by that anybody, because, because every hour I'm there longer, you know, we have porta potties that just, one extra month is just there. I got to pay for that. I got to pay for the fence that's there. I got to pay for my superintendent to be there. So believe me, our goal is, we want to get done with that job as soon as we possibly can, get on, move the next one, so, yep.
So what are you seeing on commodities in terms of pricing? I know that long merch come off its peak, at least in the futures.
Uh, we're still seeing our prices are going up. But one thing like on a project like this, we purchase everything within the first month. I mean, or even the first two weeks of the job. And so everything, I, I bought everything on the, on the job, so, so I don't have to deal with that. And you have a contract with us anyway, so you don't have to worry about that. I, I have to, I'm held to that contract amount, so.
So you're talking purchasing for the whole two years project?
Yep, we purchased the entire job. The only thing I don't have purchase is the gas, so we want to keep the gas, gas prices down.
But, I mean, I appreciate your transparency. It is obviously not good for us and the plans for the district, but at least we honestly have an answer when it will be completed, so I appreciate that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Doug, for being here.
Good.
Anything else? All right. Then all those in favor of approving the Project Change Order Number One, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. This takes us to item N, which is the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Administrative Support and Administrator Salaries. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education approve the proposed salary and benefit package increases for employees in the Administrative Support and Administrator Group for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Thank you, Sue. And a second?
Second.
India? All right. I see Mr. Bachway is at the microphone, so I can let you go ahead. If you want me to talk a little bit first, or I'll just let you go ahead and present.
Yeah, there's, there's not much to present today. I know that we're getting long in the day. You know, again, this, just to clarify a couple of points, because I know there's some questions out there. In relation to what was stated on the, on the proposal here, you know, the three point five percent is of new money. And so what you are essentially approving tonight is that you are okay with the allocation of three point five percent of new money. That does not mean, as we, we talked about in our, our one-on-one board meetings, or two-on-ones, or however that was, or done by Pam, that everybody will get a three point five increase. There's still a lot of work yet to be done as far as looking at performance, looking at other things that will determine the, the pay increases for the employees in the administrator and admin support group. This allows us to have some flexibility to look at, what we talked about, some of our goals of catching some people up. But also, there are some things that we, we do in relation to job performance that may not necessarily see the same increase, that we want that flexibility with a three point five new money increase.
So the bottom statement there, all individuals in the play group who receive the same benefits, including annuity and so forth, benefits is not to be confused with salary?
That's correct. That's completely separate.
And is it correct, I think you said in the meeting, that if you're on a plan of assistance, your wage is frozen. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, we're talking about admin, admin support. We're not talking about WEA or teachers.
Right.
Okay.
This is our third, this is the final one of our contracts that is coming.
And we typically do these later in the year, unfortunately. As you already know, we always start with teachers, and that just pushes us back in our timeline. And so, and as you know, there's COVID and everything else has been going on this year. And so, you know, again, apologies for our employee groups not getting their contracts in our, normally our dedicated timeline, because we do have some admin support employees that are a hundred eighty-eight. And so they don't necessarily, not twelve months, and so we're going to try to work as diligently as we can to get those contracts out to them next week.
Great. And I just wanted to thank you. I really appreciated that graph that showed where we were at with the UEN, where our salaries fell, and some of them were shockingly low to me. So I would encourage, at least if we can be mid-range, you know, that would be a great target goal, at least, because I just felt some of the positions were pretty underpaid compared to the others, so.
Yeah, and just a reminder for the community also as well, I mean, the, the reason, and Sue, your point, you know, this is a, this is a multi-year project, and so we're not going to be able to take, to do what we want to do this year. But again, the goal is just to maintain that competitive salaries for administrative support and administrative positions in Cedar Valley and across Iowa, make gains in comparison to other districts, because Michael gave a brilliant presentation in relation to showing that districts really haven't, especially in this year, typically, when I say this year, I mean, next year, twenty-one, twenty-two, have not typically given some of the increases that we've given to our WSP and WEA group. That's a testament to Waterloo and what we believe about our employees and the work yet to come, especially since we're trying to catch up from some of the loss that happened over the pandemic. And then last but not least, it goes back to that, the value of administrative support and administrators, especially given the challenges of the pandemic, as I just mentioned, to address the loss of instructional time that our students are going to need to catch up. Again, kudos to the work and the planning that's going to happen behind the scenes with Dr. Lindman, Dr. Moore Warren, and the rest of the team, because it's going to be a Herculean effort. Kudos to the Greek mythology reference, but Herculean effort, just because there's just a lot of work yet to be done. And I think that, I just want the board to understand and appreciate that, that, you know, COVID was one thing, but the work to catch people up is going to be astronomical as well.
And just remind our public again, that, because Shannon alluded to this about, this is our third kind of voting, so we voted for the WE.
WEA and WSP, as far as. Yeah, correct. And so, I can't remember off the top of my head, Michael, but I remember the five percent increases last year for WSP, and, and I think that's a three-year, five percent increase. Again, our goal for them was to get starting pay around fifteen dollars, and that was something that we heard, not only from our WSP, but also our, also our community as well. And that's what I think you've spoken to it a number of times, that that's a focus. This does not mean that we aren't doing other things behind the scenes. Again, this is the typical, coming to you, when we're coming to negotiate or off-the-base wages, and what we can do from that standpoint. WEA was this past ye, this past year, right? Yeah. Everything's moving together. They're, WEA was this past year, and we negotiated that at three point five nine percent. And so. And so we're right in line with that for the administrator and administrative support group. Um, again, this is the one that we come to you every year, um, we've been able to really work hard to get multi-year agreements with those other groups.
And talking about the COVID, I talked to Dr. Hurtman, and she said there were five hundred and seventy-five kids at summer school today. So talk about COVID loss, and, and for staffing of that, you're good?
Yeah, we're good, I mean, I think we're, we're still, I saw some emails coming across the desk this morning about just some changes, but by and large, I think we're, we're good with staffing.
Super, good job.
All right. Thank you, appreciate it, Kingsley. All those in favor then of approving the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two administrative support and administrator salaries, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda then is item O, and this is the Cedar Valley Degree Links, and the recommended motion, woo-hoo! Mr. Frost is coming forward, all right. The Board of Education approved the propos- oh, I'm in the wrong, sorry, I'm still on my old one here, excuse me while I get to the right one. There we go. Um, the Board of Education approved the Cedar Valley Degree Links Articulation Agreement between Hawkeye Community College, the University of Northern Iowa, and the Waterloo Schools as outlined.
Subtle.
Thank you, Astro and Jesse, and Astro, Jesse, and several of us got to be there last week, yeah, and it was awesome. So, taking away, Jeff, tell us a little bit more about this exciting opportunity for our students.
Sure, thank you. Uh, I guess I'm disappointed, I thought when I walked in, the whole crowd was for this event signing, but I guess we weren't the, the main event tonight.
Is you too late on the jack?
So, um, a- again, thank you, I'm here to, uh, seek approval for the articulation agreement signing between the Waterloo Schools, Hawkeye Community College, and the University of Northern Iowa on what's called Cedar Valley Degree Links. And, um, as Shanley mentioned, last week, we had a, a really nice ceremony with, um, President Nook, um, President Holcomb, Director Ann Lebo from the Iowa Department of Ed, and of course, Dr. Lindeman, and multiple board members, and the, the DLT members were there, we had a really nice turnout representing the Waterloo Schools on this, this great event here, so. Um, what this is, and I'm not really sure we got into that too much last week, um, we, we maybe could have explained a little bit better, but to me, what we're really talking about here is that we are setting up an opportunity for our students to save time, to save money, and to earn money sooner by following this articulation agreement between the Waterloo Schools, Hawkeye Community College, and the University of Northern Iowa. Um, literally what we were talking about, because of the large number of liberal arts courses we offer, and the large number of CTE courses we offer at the Waterloo Career Center, students literally in a four or five semester sequence, if scheduled correctly, can get their first year of college done in the eyes of Hawkeye Community College. They would then transfer to Hawkeye Community College for one year, or, for one year, and then from there, they could transfer onto the University of Northern Iowa, depending on the program, if it's a five-year program for three more years, or, or for two more years, or if it's a four-year program for, uh, two more years, actually, so. The, the premise is, if you're in a five-year program, you would basically be in school for three years post-secondary, or four years post-secondary, I'm really messing up my numbers here. Must've been falling asleep back there or something, I don't know. Um, the five-year program would take four years total, um, one year in Waterloo, one year at Hawkeye, three years at UNI, two years at UNI, I'm really messing this up here. And a four-year program would take three years total post-secondary, one year at Waterloo, one year at Hawkeye, two years at UNI. So we approved this agreement, or we signed this agreement, but we actually really need, um, your official blessing to make this official. And what's really cool about this, and we're starting with the first three programs, are actually typically five-year programs. It's manufacturing, construction, and graphic technology, so those are five-year programs. When students get aligned with the courses they need in the Waterloo Schools, that'd be one year of college. They would then go onto Hawkeye for one more year, and then you and I to finish this with two more years, finish the five-year program in four years. And as I said earlier, you save time, you save money, and you earn money sooner. Literally, the savings in this program with the initial three programs are basically, you are not only saving one year of college on, on post-secondary side, and really, that one year at Hawkeye Community College in these three programs is actually going to be tuition-covered by Last Dollar Scholar, so literally, you're only going to pay tuition at UNI for two years. But the other benefit is, by getting out of a five-year program in four, you're actually get, starting your career one year earlier, and the average starting salary is around sixty thousand dollars in this, in this program, so your earning potential is actually kicking off a year earlier. So it's a huge win-win-win all the way around. So the first three programs are five-year programs, but we are working on articulation agreements with other programs, and right now, we're looking at our K-12 teacher prep and our early childhood program. But I think Dr. Lindeman said it best when she said, you know, I think Andrew asked the question, you know, how many of these do you see us doing? And she said, "All of them." And that is the goal with us, Hawkeye, and UNI, is to create a, a articulation where a student that wants to go to the Waterloo Career Center would be able to get out of school post-secondary one year sooner and into a professional field one year earlier, so that is the goal. Jane has set that bar, and I am totally in line with that. Um, Dr. Holcomb knows that, Dr. Nook knows that, we have everybody on the same, um, line moving forward, that this is what we want to do, and it's the right thing to do. Um, we've always had the ability to do this, but it just takes a lot of things to align these, these moving parts. And actually, I think Jane, you said it started, actually, it was before I came on board, I know the conversations had started many years ago, but through different things like higher learning commission, and faculty boards, and, you know, all these different hoops you gotta jump through, um, it just took a while to get this aligned, and Jim Woolpart and Jane Bradley at UNI and Dr. Lindeman led this charge, and, you know, um, Jim and Jane are both left, left since then, but we got this done, and I think it's a huge boon and benefit for our students. And, um, like I said, i- it's, it's a huge win all the way across this district. First in the state of Iowa to have an articulation agreement like this.
I'm glad you said that, I was about to just say, that was such a cool thing. And I have heard from several students who, who have had difficulty because the articulation wasn't there, and, you know, they want to go on, but, but it's just not, you know, it's two entities that are not used to having that process be seamless. And, yeah, and so the work behind the scenes to get that to happen is such a great benefit for our kids. I mean, I agree a one hundred percent, we've got three programs, let's have thirty.
All four, absolutely.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, the, uh, uh, basically, the courses that are taught, Hawkeye courses taught at Career Center, and Hawkeye courses taught at Hawkeye, the ones listed here are guaranteed, uh, to be accepted by UNI.
Correct.
Because that's been the issue, you know, every course out at the Career Center, as I understand it, is, is, uh, is honored by Hawkeye.
They, they are Hawkeye, well, we do have one Kirkwood and two DMAC courses, but, I, but, to make picture, our students are Hawkeye students, taking Hawkeye courses.
But those credits don't all transfer to the state universities.
They had not.
Yeah.
And, and this field, these first three, they worked through that, you know, and really, it's some coding stuff, changing a few schematics, skycode things, now they've got them aligned, and again, I know President Nook and President Holcomb's vision is actually to get as much aligned as possible. And, you know, like Dr. Lindeman said, we want thirty programs that are, that were articulated this way. I see that happening, because i- i- if you can do it with these three, we can really create this process with all others there.
So was part of this process, you and I, uh, evaluating the courses at Hawkeye and Career Center such that they met the rigor that will be accepted, okay?
Yeah, from my understanding, the biggest thing was getting the two faculty councils together from the schools and the like departments and saying, what we're teaching here would articulate or agree with this, and then they actually did some, um, actually coding changes or, uh, verbiage changes on what the course is called here, so it could actually flow, I'm getting all scatterbrained here. But so it'd flow into what's going on at Hawkeye, but, or UNI, but they have worked through all those, and, um, I actually know right now, we have two departments that are working actively on the early childhood and the pre-K-12 teacher prep also.
So what's the, uh, hope that we might have some other connections with the other universities in the state and down the line? That would figure this out, you know, what, what opportunity might we have with Iowa, Iowa State in different, other arenas there?
Well, right now, it's obviously us, Hawkeye, and UNI, um, for that to take place, it actually would have to be really Hawkeye and them working with the other regions or four-year schools, um, to make those articulations possible. You know, we, the, the big thing we do on our side is we offer a lot of liberal arts courses at the high schools. We offer a lot of CTE courses at the Career Center, and with the number of classes that we can take, up to eleven in, in certain cases, you know, we've taken care of that first year of, of college over a four or five semester sequence. Um, really, the next step for that type of opportunity, let's say, when we bring on ag or hor- horticulture, and it would maybe make sense for you and I to have that program, or Iowa State, they would, Hawkeye would work with Iowa State, which they already do, by the way, they do actually have some articulation agreements with both Iowa State and Iowa already, so, um, hopefully knocking down this door makes the other doors a lot easier to get into.
So this is the trickle-down effect, so we got it from the top, how do we get the students? I mean, what's the recruiting look like, um, to get these students to know this information, parents knowing the information, um, things of that nature?
So it's really going to be about, and actually, this is active on both, or you and I, Hawkeye and our side, active recruitment of what these programs are, the hundred percent placement, the Last Dollar Scholar, you're going to be earning earlier, excite them, we already know we have students that are excited that want to go into these areas, but they just don't understand, I mean, and again, before, like, I don't know who said that, but they would actually, I think it was Astro that said, you would actually hit a roadblock when you, you know, if you, if it's not a transferable class, and it's like, oh, man, I want to do this, but where am I going to transfer to, because none of this will count? Now that does, so now all of a sudden, we start showing them how, if, if they, if it's scheduled correctly, they can get this done in one year, four semesters at, in the Waterloo Schools, one year at Hawkeye, two years at UNI. You know, that's going to be on us, working with you and I in Hawkeye to make sure we beat down every door and let every student that has interest in those areas make them aware of it, working, of course, with our counselors. Um, you know, I think the career counseling component and model we're going towards is going to play a huge role in this too.
So does it take effect this fall, when does it take effect?
Well, it's actually, as soon as you would approve it as a board, it would actually be in effect now. What we then have to do is kind of backtrack and see which students are interested in the end game programs, and figure out what thing you would need in their schedule going into their senior year to get that first year of, of, um, Waterloo Schools, which is the first year of Hawkeye completed. So i- it could actually technically, if students have really loaded up on like fundamentals of communication and Comp One and other courses at their schools and have followed a pathway at the Career Center, they may have a large portion of, of the courses done already, but it'd be on our side to work with the counselors to articulate, okay, what do they have, what do they need, and how can we get them, at least through our piece of the, the puzzle, so they're ready to jump into one year at Hawkeye? And so that's kind of the next steps for us, is to kind of work with the counselors, to educate them, really to look back at transcripts, to see which students would have interest in these three areas, and work with them to make sure we can do all that we can do to ensure that they have, if it's ten classes, or eleven classes, or eight classes, that they have all those completed and know that they can then go on to Hawkeye and to UNI.
I'm really excited about this, especially, we've talked about, you know, trying to, uh, educate the younger generation, you know, this is like a selling piece for, you know, middle school, sixth grade, fifth graders, going into doing the, uh, career camps during the summer, again, getting them engaged and understanding this, I mean, it just gonna, it's just, again, educating them constantly to this end goal, to understanding that, so the earlier, the better at this point, yeah.
With, with something like this, you know, if a student decides sophomore, junior year of high school, boy, I think I want to do this, and they try to get on this articulation, it could be too late by the time you're sophomore or junior, if you're not aware of stuff to take early on. Um, if we can educate them and connect them and, you know, what the plan is, K through twelve, career counseling, and they're excited in fifth grade, and become even more focused on it in seventh, eighth grade, when they get to high school, when they run out their four-year plan, it should be pretty laid out, that you're sophomore year, you're going to take this, and this, and this, and by the time you're a senior in high school, you will have all the requirements done for these first three programs, and the next two programs, and the next twenty-five programs as they come down the road. And we'll, we'll get all that lined up and really, um, articulate that with the students, the parents, the counselors, everybody that needs to be aware of that.
I think there's definitely, uh, your, your words echo, you need to be, anybody still listening out there, if you're a seventh grade parent, you need to be thinking about this, because there's things you can do as an eighth grade student that will help you, you're down the road here with this articulation. What classes are you able to take early? Um, that said, too, I think it's, uh, some important element that, you know, we talk about, you know, sort of grow our own educators a little bit, or also, you know, grow our workforce in Cedar Valley, this is, you know, a way to help springboard more people into our workforce here potentially, so.
I think all three institutions would say, and, and actually, um, Dr. Lindeman had invited Kerry there, and Kerry would agree a hundred percent, this is actually a huge thing for the Cedar Valley, because we're going to grow our own, and by articulating this agreement and keeping them at local schools here in Cedar Valley, and actually putting work-based experiences with that, work-based learning experiences with that, we feel we're going to have a heck of a lot better chance of keeping them here for the long term. And with all the great things going on in, in the Cedar Valley, in Waterloo Cedar Falls, um, and really all around our Cedar Valley, we really know that this is going to be the catch to keep our kids here and not have to go off to Des Moines or out of state, because we have a lot to do here, and this will help keep them there by not even exposing them per se to, hey, what's going on at Loyola in Chicago, when I can stay here and finish my degree through this articulation, you know, we'll, we'll keep them here, and that's our goal.
Yay.
Others?
All right. All right, well, this is exciting, so stay tuned for what the education pieces, the K-12 and the early ed, that'll be great, so. Okay, all those in favor then of approving the Cedar Valley Degree Links Articulation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Then we skip back down to item S, which is the selection of the armored car contract services, and the recommended motion is the Board of Education accept the recommendation and approve the contract bid from Rochester Security Services for twenty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars annually as presented from August first of twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. And a second?
Second.
Three? And discussion? Michael, I know this is just a, you know.
We got a couple of bids and.
Yeah, we haven't done this for quite some time, there really Rochester was the only service that was available, um, in Waterloo, but, um, armored knights are in several other urban areas in Iowa, and they wanted to move into, uh, Waterloo as, uh, a central Iowa establishment, and they've kind of pestered us for about three months to say, we can beat your prices, we can be better, we can do better quality work, whatever, so. Um, we put that out, uh, on their request, and, you know, since we only had one other service, it was a good test to see what we were getting, um, and the bids, as you see them, uh, are quite different, and especially with a fuel escalation clause on the higher ones, so, um, even though they had some nice, uh, services of how they performed some things, updated a little bit, um, the satisfaction that we've had with Rochester did not, um, deem that we go away from them for, um, a few more bells and whistles.
So, Michael, I have to say, when I saw this listed as armored car service, I'm like, what is that for? Can you give us an example of how money moves with this, or, um?
Well, Jeff could give you a much bit, much more thorough answer on it, but, um, we have, you know, all the money that comes from students, whether it's fundraising, whether it's, um, fees, whether it's lunch, which until just a couple of years ago, that was a big part of this.
That's like our lunch as well.
We still have the elementaries either one or twice a week, um, uh, an armored car, um, visitation. Uh, middle schools are a couple of times a week, for sure, and the high schools, um, it varies with the seasons and when the games are. Um, the issue is of probably three or four times a week with that, and some pretty major dollar amounts sometimes. So, um, it's just the security of getting, um, cash out of people's hands, um, quickly, and to also have some accountability with that, that when it's picked up. And to also have some accountability with that, that when it's picked up by the, by the car service, they verify the amount that they're given. Uh, then the bank does, and then it's back to us, and, um, then it's back to Jeff, actually. So, um, it's, it's going on about three or four different levels of people. Uh, being accountable for the amount of money that gets to the bank for every different. Uh, effort of fundraising or raising money within the district.
So, so is this a predetermined schedule or on-call?
It is mostly predetermined, but it can be on-call based on what's going on. Um, you know, homecoming at one of the high schools could be one of the, oh, we need you every day. Um, and it can back off sometimes in a slower part of the season. Um, but lunch has changed this a little bit, so they have been able to pull back a little bit. Um, but it still is a need to just process, it also, uh, pushes the office staff to get it processed. Get it deposited, doesn't sit in somebody's file drawer for two or three days or a week. Um, so idle, idle cash is always a risk. So you handle it, process it, and move it on and.
Do all the schools have safes?
They either have a safe or a locking file cabinet that's like a reinforced one, fireproof one. Uh, there's a lot of different setups in the buildings, but they all have something secure.
So this is all year round then?
All year round.
So is there flexibility in this contract in terms of, I mean, is it a fixed price no matter how many times they're called or?
No, if, if we are going significantly above a weekly schedule or a monthly schedule, then there would be a. A fee added to that, which would be added to both of them.
So if we don't see the need for, to pick up quite as frequently, then does it reduce or not?
Um, we haven't done that to this point, um, because there's just enough activity still going on. But if it got to the point that we didn't need it to go to the elementary every week, you know, we would just negotiate. A, a, a different schedule or maybe, um. Do it more often in another place. Um, but both companies have pledged flexibility with this. If it really does need to be less because of changing circumstances, then they will honor us on that too.
Because it's a four-year contract?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So then all those in favor of approving the armored car contracted services, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Move on to item T, which is on page eighty-four, and this is the Medicaid services. And the recommended motion is the Board of Education accept the recommendation and approve the contract bid. From Timberline Billing Services for six percent of claims as presented from July first, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
So move.
Aster and Sue, thank you. And discussion again, Michael, this is kind of in your court. Using this company that, uh, to collect and help us with our.
There, there is quite a bit to this exhibit, and I'm gonna try to just streamline through it to give you a little background. The first thing I want to say is there was an error that I want to make known. And right that is at the bottom of page eighty-four. It says Central Rivers AEA is a client of Timberline. And all the AEA's went to MJ Care a couple of years ago. So this was still in our records and wasn't verified. And, uh, it was brought to our attention, uh, from an outside source that that is no longer the case. So I just want to make sure that was, um, known by you. I just want to talk about bidding for a second. From the standpoint of state law, it is not an issue that you put out specs. And ask for prices and you are restricted to take the lowest bid. That is not the case because that is not apples to apples. They may agree on all the specs, but then some of the other things are different. Um, and it gives a little flexibility for companies that may do the same thing, do things a little different. Or have different, um, digital capabilities, training capabilities, or so forth. So as a result of that, several years ago, the Iowa Legislature came out with the ruling that you do not have to take the lowest bid. You have to take the best bid for your situation. So this, this exhibit is not necessarily how I usually bring things to you, but I kind of do. What's the best thing for us? Um, sometimes the price isn't, isn't the last thing. Um, but one thing I want to just, uh, emphasize on eighty-four at the bottom. Um, number one, point one, Waterloo has a relationship with Timberline. And that can't be understand, understated. Um, when I came here thirteen or fourteen years ago. The amount of Medicaid claims that this district was collecting. Was less than a fifteen-hundred student district in Wisconsin that I had worked at. We were doing nothing. We got a couple hundred thousand in claims, in revenue. And it wasn't really even understood by, um, the special ed department, the other people that were dealing with it of how this really worked. I said, this has got to change. So we, at that time, hooked up with Timberline. And they, they have been a very close partner through all of this to. Um, provide and rewrite and build and help us. Um, and if you look at the exhibit on page eighty-six. Um, this will give you an idea of the history that we've had with Timberline. That when we started out in two thousand nine-ten, we were paying them less than fifty thousand dollars in fees. And now it's up, before COVID hit, it was up over two hundred and fifty thousand. Well, it's not because they're charging us more, it's they have identified more kids and processed more kids. That qualified for a federal reimbursement to pay for some of their services. And those services have changed over the years. Um, sometimes it was transportation, then that went away and something else came. And, um, it's quite a partnership between the special, between the special ed department. All the teachers, all the paras that enter, uh, these, um, qualifying. Services that we provide for the students, uh, that need those. Uh, so it all, it's very heavy documentation, it has to be kept up. So it's, it was when I started and we started with Timberline. Uh, it was all papers and carbon copies of papers. And you can imagine how much went through with all of the special ed students that we have. And we bill these on fifteen-minute segments. So if you've got a bus ride for two hours back and forth, you're now doing a claim for eight different fifteen-minute periods. Um, so it is extensive and it's been a growing period for the special ed staff itself. Um, I know four or five years ago, uh, we met and we just weren't getting things processed. It wasn't getting in, we weren't getting the training. They were falling behind on the paperwork. And it was hard to say to a para, stop what you're doing for that student. Or find time away from that student and come and do your paperwork. You know how everybody loves to do paperwork. So. A few years ago, when that was kind of getting to a height, we were growing where it was a lot of claims coming in. They introduced the electronic. And yes, they did charge more when they first started. We, they had bids of six percent and they went to eight percent with that. And what that means is if you put in a claim, if, if. They process claims for a hundred thousand dollars in a year. About half of that goes to DHS. Because they are built into this system by law that they're supporting these kids and they get funded by that. And I don't know all the rules to that, but if we, if we designate a hundred thousand worth of services to bill. We really only get credit for half of that. So five hundred thousand. So you take that times six percent that you're paying. Um, that's what you would pay to Timberline to process all of your information. And keep your information and, and, um, then process it to the federal government so we can actually get the checks and all of that. Um, so it really has been, and I'm trying to say this in a quick way. That in my mind, because I've seen the progress in the special ed departments. Uh, the director and the specialists that are in charge of this are emphatic about staying with Timberline. Because of the relationship, even though MJ Care had four point nine percent as a bid, Timberline had six. But what? We're getting from what we've already done and what has been proven is they've gone out and found the kids. That needed to be processed. They didn't just leave it up to us, whatever you send in, we'll do. And that was kind of some of the references we got on the other carriers. Timberline has been, we will help you grow. We will help you understand it, we will train you, we will change our program to meet your needs. I know a few years ago, the AEA was not doing their part for Medicaid. They just said, if you want to figure that out for kids you send to Castle Hill, River Hills, that's up to you. There was no law forcing them to do it, and we were losing out on a lot of Medicaid reimbursement. Legislature has finally come in and said, you are required to do that as an AEA. So they took that burden off of us. Sometimes we did okay with it, sometimes it didn't happen. So, long story short. Um, Timberline did not have the lowest bid on calculating the percentage of the cost of claims. But for the services they are providing and they have proven over the last ten years. Um, that is my recommendation because I've seen it happen. And I've been doing, um, Medicaid claims for thirty years. Um, and seeing what Timberline has done in this district. And for the current special ed staff that are using it to be that enthused about it. I have no hesitation to say we're all on one page of where we think the district should go with this. And it, it's not like we're paying more money. It's like we are. Taking advantage of the services provided to us as an option. I mean, we could play, we could pay less money, we would just. Claim less services.
But are their fees negotiable because we had eight percent for that five-year and it was six percent for the four-year previous to that? Because if you look at our figures, I mean, I'm just thinking they came in, they got us on speed to do this, as you said. But like the last two years, nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one have been, I mean, they're within four hundred dollars of each other, of reimbursement. So wouldn't it deem that it might get easier because we've identified the areas we're needing? You know what I'm saying?
But they keep identifying more kids. And the reason it went from six to eight, we, because the introduction, introduction of the electronic filing. And now that we're bidding again, they're taking that back off because they don't have to train us like they did then. They don't have to spend their time, uh, helping us understand that and identifying kids and getting all the things in place. Um, and it's not just the special ed department, the school nurses have to deal with this. Um, I thought I had somebody else down too, but anyway. It, it is, oh, the AEA's was the other one. So to find all of the services that are billable for any particular student. Uh, it takes a team effort to do that. Um, and if you've got a good person leading that team, the followers are a lot happier to do that. So, um, we did get some recommendations from other schools. Um, and it all confirmed the same kind of experience that they had. Um, I just got a list as I was sitting here tonight. Cedar Falls College Community, Council Bluffs, Davenport, Dubuque, Fort Nah, Iowa City, Lynnmar, Marshalltown, Mason City. Uh, Muscatine, Otomo are all other UEN or large schools that use Timberline.
So what's the reason?
Do you know what their rates are? Sorry. Do you know what their rates are?
No, I don't.
What's the reason that the claims dropped so much the last two years?
Pandemic. The kids weren't in school.
You can't bill if you're not providing them services. So if the kids weren't here, we couldn't provide.
Yeah.
That fifteen minutes of reimbursable service. And even at the high school this year, even with the kids being every other day, so there were some Medicaid drops because they weren't here. Re- reimbursement decreased.
So we expect that to rebound. So, but as you look at the higher fees we paid, we're getting more revenue off that. The revenue that we're getting in the end of that equation is higher because we're processing more kids.
Thousand bucks. I, I just think for a five-year commitment, you know, going with the six percent, I don't know. That's just my thoughts.
Yeah, it really depends on how good they are at finding the claims. I mean, that's where the money is, seems to me.
What's that? They are, but they're not as, I mean, we're, I can't get into too many details, but the. The references we got some up from some other district, they weren't as comprehensive, they weren't as easy to use. They weren't able to shape our needs into reprogramming it where we wanted to. We're just kind of stuck with a canned. Program that came out.
I believe only two in this area available.
These are the three in the state.
Three in the state.
Yeah. And maybe even the Midwest. Because the other two, one, the other two have been around a long time as well.
I don't know, it might be helpful to make note of the clause on page ninety-four. Although the agreement is a, a five-year plan, it does have a, an, um, yeah.
Yep.
It shall be automatically renewed for additional terms of one year unless either party has provided a written notice within thirty days. So we could certainly monitor that and keep you posted on where we are on claims. This next year, it could be, um, you know, a more normal year where we will have everybody in school every day. And so it should be more comparable to the nineteen, eighteen, nineteen total. So we'll take a look at that, but.
I was gonna ask that very question. And Michael, tell me again how long we've been with Timberline?
I think it's two thousand eight.
Eight. It's been a while. Okay, okay.
There could be some changes in the.
Yeah.
Legislation with COVID and stuff at May.
There could, so, okay.
Yeah, I, I think, and the way I'm looking at it is in spite of pandemic, they got that much revenue. Identified that many services, so.
No, I, I, I appreciate having a company everybody's comfortable with, but I like that, that I know if we could review this next year and see.
Absolutely.
Because I just think, just saying flat out six percent for five years, I mean. I mean, when we had a bid that was under.
Right.
Five percent, I, I would appreciate the data to back up my decision that I'm gonna go with somebody uh, over a point higher.
Just being truthful with the money.
Yep, sure.
When we're talking two million dollar revenue.
We could put that in our uh, finance committee notes for next summer.
The revenue is what we get.
Right.
The fee that we pay them is not, is like twenty thousand dollars difference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On an estimated year.
So this is twenty thousand dollars difference, but I think what Sue's saying or what I'm saying is. If we look at next year and it goes from one point nine six five million to two point nine six five, then I'm happy.
Right, if it goes down, yeah.
If it, if it just, you know, increases a couple hundreds or something, we have school all year. It just increases a couple hundreds, then we, then when you look at it and say, well, why aren't we recovering to where we were?
Yep.
Or have we conquered the tools to recover what we have?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yep.
Cause I think there's a point of learning tools.
The returns.
Exactly.
We also gotta look at, you know, my, impacts enrollment that may change, you know?
There's a lot of variables.
All right, are we good?
Yep.
Super. All those in favor then of approving the medicated, medicated, little, Medicaid contracted services, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item then is the travel, transfer, geez, I'm getting punched, I can't read. The transfer of general fund, APR, ESTER funds to the student activity fund. Um, this is item U on page ninety-seven. And the recommended motion is that the board approve the resolution that finds, funds in the amount of one point two three five million from the general fund. Be transferred to the student activity fund to fund co-curricular or extracurricular activities that fail to meet their financial needs. As a result of COVID nineteen restrictions in the school budget year beginning July first of twenty twenty.
So move.
Thanks, Esther, in a second?
Sure.
All right, and discussion, um, you know, this is really to, to sort of capture things like our gate receipts and such. That were down during COVID nineteen when we couldn't have.
Yeah.
Capacity or we had such restrictions. I'm so sorry that, I can't. It's like seriously right, it's, I'm just gonna go like this, so anyway. Yeah, it keeps moving.
But this number is.
It's coming in the windows.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'm sorry, it's.
This number is based on the revenue that was lost since March twenty twenty. Now, it isn't an exact science of what we've talked about, finance committee, I sat and talked with the ADs and Dan Huff and. Just said, cause they came with a long list of things that they missed out on for the, from the pandemic. And this is a three-year cycle that the legislature has opened up this opportunity. It doesn't have, it doesn't mean we have to do this again, it doesn't mean we have to do another dime, it doesn't stop us from doubling it. But the issue is, what do you want to do with it? It, it needs to come to the board now to access the money from twenty twenty-one. And to start that process of saying, how are we going to support co-curricular and extracurricular? Activities in the district, I mean, some of it is as simple as you lost out on fifty thousand dollars worth of football revenue. You couldn't do what you wanted to do. Here's reimbursement. As opposed to a robotics club that's struggling through volunteer um, donations. And we see this as an achievement gap fix in the whole plan, which that hasn't been established yet. But it does give that opportunity to say, here's ESTER funds that we could apply to that. To address the strategic goal of getting kids involved in an extracurricular activity. Or if they're in it, they're funded. They're not trying to scrape by to make something work, so it's really just a ground floor opportunity. To say, are we gonna support? Not just athletics, not just instruction, not just instrumental, musical. It's, are we going to look at the whole child? And the things that they do and. Um, you know, there's lots of uh, evidence out there that. Um, if you're involved in other things, you're better at everything. So this is just taking opportunity of that legislative action to say. Let's give it a shot.
So in the past, when the, you know, we've had a football game, we have earnings from a game and the door count looks great. Those funds go back where, to do what?
They're just go back into the football program, whoever is the home team that night, they get the gate. And that goes back into student activity fund to support. Um, equipment and uniforms. What's that? It does, but it gets back to them in the end.
It's still exactly in that, in that area, right?
Yeah.
If it was generated from football, it comes back to.
It also has to support other sports.
Yeah.
Cause that's where the majority of the money comes, that's what you're getting at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So people, so organizations will be able to have access to this money at some point? If they add.
I see it as they're going to decide what they need to backfill that they really missed. And how do they want to go forward with enhancing student activity support?
Who dictates that?
Well, that hasn't been decided yet either, but. We have ADs, we have coaches, we have music people, we have drama people, we have, you know, to, to put together a, a contingency of. Of leaders in those areas to say, okay, we're not just scraping by now, what can we do to really help kids?
This is one topic.
For now.
For now.
There's, there's three years we can do this.
This allows us to go back to last year, to twenty twenty. And we could choose to never do it again, or we could do it two more times.
And we could find out, this is really great.
Yeah.
So costs associated with changing conferences that we heard about earlier, would that qualify?
Um, yeah, you kind of mentioned that when we discussed this a little bit before. Um, normally when there are expenses to an athletic or whatever group that they have no choice over. The general fund can support it.
Oh.
But this could be used for that as well and just saying that's part of what we're gonna do with this. Um.
Okay.
But it's just kind of drawing up a new consideration of how we do student activity. Without sending kids door to door to sell candy bars.
Which I appreciate.
So we need a student activity fund czar, is what we need.
We have one. He presented tonight with the football. He's the district AD.
He's Dan.
For athletics, is he still hiding here? Oh, there he is.
So that includes.
He's not just, he's not just athletics, he's extracurricular.
He's drama?
Extracurricular, everything.
Drama, band, everything.
He's a voice for all of them.
Robotics?
Robotics?
I can't answer all the questions.
Yeah.
I, I can answer some of that. There are certain areas where we actually have somebody, so um. We, we have a STEM coordinator who handles the robotics, um. We have a, a person who does our music contests, and so those things are not necessarily under Dan's purview, but. Um, so I actually am just looking at, I'm just thinking of the list, it's up on my board. And I have a list of everything that's in his, in his area, I can get that to you too, but it's, it's really, I mean, if there's a person who's already doing that in our district. But otherwise, it's pretty much all things. Extra, extracurricular, super.
Michael, thank you for the, uh, thinking outside the box a little bit about this as well, because I know this was something that kind of came to you and you presented to us in finance. And I appreciate it that you've been really thinking about kids and what makes a difference, and so.
Well, and the, the account really did suffer.
Yeah, I know.
Over the last year and a half, so.
Michael wasn't wanting to buy any more food for us.
Right, exactly, so. All right, is there anything further on that? Then, all those in favor of approving that resolution to transfer those funds, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. That concludes the action items on our agenda tonight, so we can move to item V.
Oh, the V.
Which is financial information, sorry, we're not, we're not quite done, India, give me.
Got it.
Yes.
And we're into triple digits on the page numbers. I just want to. I just want to point out that through May, as we received the first claim reimbursement from the ESTER funds. That if you look at the graph on page ninety-nine, you can see where we have spiked. So we are about nine million dollars ahead in revenue this year because of that. Um, that is what's strengthening the budget for the next couple of years, two, three, four, five years. As we then apply the design for the achievement gap to the money that we've been able to manage. So, and if you look um, over on the. The number, the columns, you can see where May is quite a bit higher than the last two years. Um, management fund is up a little bit, but I know we're gonna have higher insurance costs. Uh, we're meeting with PD Sam tomorrow. Um, and just on page one hundred, the sales tax fund, the little white square in the middle. That's the money we have free and clear to do the WCCX project as of right now. And there's nine point seven million over on the right side, that is what's left to pay out on the Lowell project. Pebble is a little higher, cause the projects have not been as um, intensive this year. Um, so we're sitting almost at four million compared to two and a half at this time last year. So without going through all of this, I also sent you um, that report and all the revenues and the expenditures. Where you can see by object code, line by line, how they have compared to last year. Um, expenditures are staying pretty flat. I, I think our um. Total of expenditures was a hundred and thirty-nine million um, last year and it's projected. Uh, in the forecast model at about a hundred and forty-two. Um, but I think that's a little high. Um, and our revenues are going to be ten million higher than last year. So we're gonna see an unspent balance jump by ten to maybe twelve. So it is coming to be through May, so it's. Um, expected to finish the year that way, that way.
Not just an unspent balance, but a cash balance.
Yep.
That's important.
You're welcome.
And I assume if we have more questions, we can reach out.
You can always ask me questions.
Yes, thank you. All right, I can turn it over to Dr. Lindeman for her superintendent's report.
Well, given the lateness of the night, I'm going to be really picky about what I choose to talk about tonight, but really the main thing, and especially with Andrew here, is just. To remind our public and actually all of the board members too, that the um, career counseling center, Waterloo Schools Career Counseling Center is open for business. And we have had multiple families who have called to schedule appointments, to have conversations about four-year plans, to perhaps change one class from this to that. Um, we had somebody I know who, I, I just, cause we have a roster going, we had somebody who called and they just wanted to talk with the counselor about helping, how to help their child. Maybe hone in on a career. And so by possibly taking some career, um, career interest inventories and just having those conversations. And so I just really, I mean, it's free, it's a free service. I actually was at a ballgame one night and some, uh, eighth grade parents said. What do you think about that? And I said, well, let me tell you what I think about it, that I scheduled an appointment for my own child. So I think it's really important that our, um, our public and our families know that that is there for them, so. Uh, eighth grade, ninth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade, twelfth grade, if you are a parent or a child and you have any questions, please, please call the number. Um, and we have that information on our webpage and so, and we actually sent a. Flyer. A flyer out, and so, let, pull up the page, right there, so it's three one nine, four three three, CCC one. Four three three, CCC one, and there's also a website too, so it looks to me like most of the people are um, contacting actually by phone. It looks like is kind of the winner, so, um, although there are definitely some people who are sending emails and somebody will get back with you right away, so, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we can move on to board comments, and I can start with Lael.
Yeah, just, uh, I think it was a good meeting, we did a lot of good things, uh. Um, there's a lot of public input, which is very much appreciated. I, I wish every meeting was, had that much.
Me too.
Public input. Uh, just, uh, at some time, we're probably gonna ex- expect or close the gap vision to match the budget items that. Michael's talking about, so I don't know when that is, but. Be very interested in how that's shaping up.
Esther?
Um, I, yeah, absolutely, uh, I agree with Lael, um. The, this is probably the most full board meeting I've been a part of. Uh, just input from the community and, and the top, I mean, what, what was on the agenda, I think, uh, were all the important things. Um, I do wanna thank Dr. Lindeman for allowing the ADs to move forward on the potential to join the new conference. Uh, both ADs, I know we spoke before and um, you kind of made the comment that I, I'll let them handle it, I'll let them. Um, you know, discuss it, um, and thanks to the coaches and community members of East, uh, for seeing the need. Uh, for this to happen, uh, I believe the makeup of this new, of this new conference, uh, fits the whole Waterloo community. Uh, so I wanted to thank, uh, the coaches and community members that, um, attended the meetings, um, to push this forward. And I think this will be a good thing for the Waterloo community as a whole, so. So I.
Thank you. Sue?
Yeah, I'm just more, I think, coming back to Dr. Lindeman for just kind of a recap on the Sloan Wallace. I just got a text from a couple people that saw it on Channel Seven, and then I pulled it up. And they said that, um, it said it would be done yet this summer, so I wondered around. Since we didn't know those dates, if you could give a timeline, and then they said the cost was a hundred and forty, which Pam said was high, but I didn't know a cost. You know, so just details around that, cause I just wondered with summer school, how we were gonna do that. I'm a little nervous about Irving meeting a summer school site and having all that demolition at the summer school site. So just maybe clarification, cause KFDO put all those out there, and I'm like, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I don't actually have all of those dates with us, I know that really what your action today is just for us to put it out for bid. And so there is a proposed timeline, and I don't, Pam, do you happen to know that? Uh, there's a proposed timeline, and so we would accept bids.
Bids would be accepted, uh, June twenty-ninth. We will have to have a special board meeting to approve those bids, we're looking at somewhere around the thirtieth, um, first of July, second of July. I know that's really about time for vacations and that type of thing, but that's to be scheduled yet. And then it would, um, the contracts would then go out mid-July, so the work would be done in August.
Which is when there is no summer school per se, so um, hoping that timeline would work out.
Just, just cause thinking if we were gonna try to have a ceremony, that's pretty quick, we're mid-June, so gonna have to get something a month now to get it, if we're gonna invite people to come there.
And the reason for the, um, kind of.
And the reason for the um kind of expedited timeline is that we wanna have it done before kids are coming back to school in the fall. So that's kind of the push to to get that done. Yeah, yep, yep.
Thank you. I I just wondered, because they, I got a text, and so I pulled up K W W, I'm like, oh, a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and this, I don't know any of that, so.
Well, we don't either, it was just an expected budget, so I think that, that number actually, um I was interviewed this afternoon by K W W and they asked that question, and I said, well, we're anticipating that it'll be around that. That was the projection, so we'll find out where the bids come in.
Okay, Jesse?
Congratulations to everybody involved with the Mills School STEM camp or the Mills School Career Center camp that happened this week, three days there, and uh or last week, it should be last week, yeah, no, last week. Day right ahead, but that was a, saw a lot of kids there, a lot of uh kids from the community there enjoying that, and uh big thank for all the things to the volunteers that came in to help with the programming and staff helped put on, but um there's a, uh pretty impressive, listen to people say, oh, wow, everybody, and this and that, and hadn't seen all the renovations, so. Uh still a lot of good news to uh spread word there, so.
I have a quick question. Um I think last time it was stated that June fifteenth was going to be the application date for those who wanted to do transfers or for the diversity bill. Did we change the date or is that still the same?
I just emailed the State Department, um, but it's today, Monday, so it must've been Friday. And um was told that they are still working on that, so I actually don't have that yet. And so we'll, um, I can reach out again to Ann Lebo uh tomorrow and find out where they are, so I actually haven't, you know, I just, I just asked about that on Friday.
Are we still getting requests?
I have not, um, we've been out with administrative retreats, so I haven't looked at the numbers from the last time I reported, so but I, I will do that and let you know.
Okay. Um I'll just, in with the saying, thank you for the community for coming out, um your words, your um your ideas, your suggestions, your support duly noted. Um it's, and I also have to appreciate um Irving's staff also coming out and supporting, um I know it's been a long time coming for that crew wanting some, just make some changes for their kiddos at that place and their staff, so I appreciate them coming out and supporting, so, um but for everyone, it's a change in the community, but it's moving forward into something that could be something really great, historic, historical. So I'm excited to see what's next for that stadium. Pam has an update too.
And probably just to verify, we have, it is not, Sloan Wallace is not on the National Historic Registry. We have checked that, and it is not on there.
But I want to echo what everybody said about that, the input, and honoring our history. It's clear that we have a history and that it is important to us, and I think we heard that loud and clear tonight. So um I know that we've got some ways that we can continue to to honor that while still looking forward to what's best for our kids, so. Um just want to remind everyone, we do have a virtual meeting uh next week, and that meeting will be at four P M. Um it's just to take care of uh one more uh financial item that we need to, on a time we have to get that bid in. So um and then after that, we'll be looking at this other board meeting probably on the thirtieth or the first to look at the bids for somewhere around there, to look at the bids for the demolition of the stadium, so. And with that, there being nothing else to cover this evening, I would I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you, Esther, and Sue, second. All those in favor? Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you, goodnight, and be safe.